Good evening and welcome to the Goffstown Board of Selectmen meeting, January 16th, 2012. And our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Our first business item is the acceptance or correction of minutes from January 4th, 2012, and January 9th, 2012. We need a motion on that.
Motion to accept the minutes of the 4 January and 9 January? I have no corrections.
Is there a second?
I wasn't here for the 4th, so I'll abstain from...
Oh.
If you could...
He wanted to...
I'll speak. Let's withdraw that and I'll say the motion to accept the minutes of 4 January.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Steve. Any discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is she unanimous?
I abstain.
One abstention. Okay, then we'll need a motion on the minutes of the 9th.
And motion to accept the selectmen's minute from 9 January.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Next item are announcements. We have several announcements today. And because of the amount of them that I have, I don't know, Sue, do you have any others that are not in here? Okay. We have announcements. One is from a citizen, Benjamin Hampton, complimenting Officer Kevin Chapdellane for his expertise in diverting what could have been a potential serious personal crisis in December. And that's a congratulations to a commanding, he, and I'll just quote, "I commend Officer Kevin Chapdellane and all the other persons involved, both in Goffstown, to help resolve the issues that pertain to that particular incident." Another one is Public Works, two public works, Norman and Lorraine Pennard. "Thank you very much for responding so quickly to our needs and concerns regarding the dangerous tree on Riverview Park Road." And that's sincerely Norman and Lorraine Pennard. And we also have commendation on the Roy Park area. It's from Rick Wilhelmie. "Mike, please extend our gratitude to all DPW employees for an outstanding job on drainage upgrades at Roy Park. We are very fortunate to have a great team of talented, dedicated individuals willing to help. Once again, thanks for the help. Rick, Stasha, and Mike." With that, I also have a couple that I wanted just to make aware to people and members of the board. The Police Association had their annual meeting this weekend, and at that meeting they do give awards. Officer Kevin Chapdellane and Officer Jonathan Babcock both received the department's lifesaving award for separate actions during 2011. And you might remember that those two occasions, they used the deliberative to, for the lifesavings. And there were employee, also employee awards for 2011. Part-time Employee of the Year Special Officer was Dan Gerard. Employee of the Year is Donna Contilde, and Officer of the Year is the Resource Officer, Ryan Brucka. Thanks again for all your work, and we appreciate your dedication to the town of Goffstown. Thank you. Are there any others? Seeing none, next item. Item of business is public comment, and at this moment, we take comment from members of the public. And we have one here, Barry.
I just want to get a copy of the minutes from the minutes that you just approved tonight. Could I get a copy of those?
Sure.
Have they been posted?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're online.
They're online on the website?
Mm-hmm.
All right, if I can't get them, I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you're quite welcome. Okay, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move up to 6:30 since Police Chief Patrick Sullivan is here. We ready?
Are you waiting for anyone else? No? Okay.
I'm not sure if the residents will be attending. They were both...
Well, what we could do is...
You're almost there. You're almost there.
I just don't want that situation to happen a couple times.
Yeah, all right, you want to hold off then? Okay. What we'll do is we'll move on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packet, and I just needed to know your availability for 7:30 a.m. Friday morning. Need a town attorney?
I said yes.
I didn't hear back from everyone. Do I, you know?
No.
I'll be out of state. In fact, I will be out of state for Wednesday also.
This Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes, I'm available, but it's Wednesday.
So do we proceed with three?
Well, did he have another time?
Not this week. That was it for availability for this week. I tried to get him at 5 o'clock for today, but that didn't work out for him.
You don't know what his availability is next week, the beginning of the week?
About Monday, before our meeting.
Right before your meeting, next night, can I ask?
Is that a possibility?
It's for me, yeah?
Yes.
5:30 or 5?
Just hang on a second.
But we, do we need a contingency, just in case?
Like, like Friday.
Like Friday.
Like Fri- right.
So we're looking at the 23rd, right? That's Monday, 23rd?
Bad for me, jury duty.
If it's four though, as opposed to three. I know...
Well, we hope.
But, you know, potentially I'd be...
Yeah, I don't think, I personally don't think that it's good to have it with three. I think we should have it with at least four, if not the full board. So if you want to wait till Monday?
I'm fine with that.
What are we looking at, five?
On Monday, I can try 5 o'clock on Monday, the 23rd.
That would be good for me, because the court dismisses people at 4 o'clock.
Okay. All right.
And that's the 23rd.
Can we, can we have an alternative beyond Monday, just in case?
Yeah, we can do that.
I say that because then if that's the case, then we have to let, you know, the interested parties know that we couldn't arrange a meeting with our attorney until the week after, so...
So we would delay their meeting if...
We'll have to.
Right.
So do you want to pick one or two days afterwards so that Sue can touch base with Drescher?
I'll be getting my calendar. Right back. Were you talking about our morning one, or what were the thoughts?
Well, I didn't know what everybody's going to be available. I mean, I'm pretty much open that week.
Tuesday and Wednesday, I'm completely open.
Are you out of state?
Nope, just Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week, so I'm good anytime next week.
And Nick? Yeah, if you did mornings, I'm good next week, too.
Your schedule next week?
I'm available.
Tuesday and Wednesday? Mm-hmm. You available?
At 5?
No, not...
Morning? Do we want to do morning or not?
Well, I just thought at this point that if those days were good, we'll see what time Attorney Drescher might be. I mean, it's possible he's tied up in court. I mean, five, you want to say 5 o'clock is a good time, and what about something in the morning? Would that be all right?
I'm good morning or afternoon next Tuesday and Wednesday.
Okay, so 5 o'clock though appears to be okay for everybody?
So we should, Monday is preferred, if not, then it'll be Wednesday?
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday or Wednesday, okay.
And what time on Tuesday, Wednesday, still 5?
Still 5, right.
Unless that doesn't work.
That's probably more open for him than mornings because of court.
Right, okay.
Okay. Consensus folder tonight includes AP warrants, an annual equitable sharing agreement between Goffstown Police Department and DOJ and Treasury, employee status form to extend a temporary position.
So I need a motion to accept the consensus folder.
Is there a question?
Sure.
Isn't that an item we're going to discuss later?
Yes, if you feel it needs discussion, we can take it out here and have that discussion later.
Okay. Which one are we talking about?
The last one.
The last one.
Employee status form.
Okay. So it'll be just those two, the AP warrants and the equitable sharing agreement?
Sure.
Okay, we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve the consensus folder, first two items, AP warrants and the sharing agreement of the Police Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Correspondence, you have a letter from a Pittsfield couple regarding Goffstown business, and you have emails regarding drainage project. No action is needed at this time on either of those. You have an assessors recommendation for elderly exemption, map 15, lot 115.
Motion to approve the assessors' recommendation.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, abstaining?
I'm voting. I just had another thing. I voted yes.
That's 5-0-0?
Yeah.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yes.
Going back to correspondence, the letter from the Pittsfield couple regarding the allegation that a business was operating there, and this is the home that sustained a fire loss, was that fire loss determined, what was the origin of that fire? Was it related to the garage area or no?
They have not determined that. The newspaper did say it was in the walls near the pellet stove.
Okay.
But they didn't say, I don't think they've determined the cause yet. Next item is the MOU for the command vehicle. Last week, the vice chairman presented the MOU for the board's consideration to support Manchester's grant application for a regional command vehicle. In light of the fact that the police chief had a command vehicle in CIP, perhaps we should ask for his input regarding how this would meet his needs.
Scott, you have a question?
I'd like to request that we discuss this in 10 minutes, immediately prior to the depart, you know, the other issues. It's why the chief is already here.
Prior to or...
Immediately prior to or after, it doesn't matter.
Prior to highway safety?
Or after.
Okay.
Okay. 2012 draft of the annual warrant. You have gotten opinions on it from DRA now and Attorney Drescher. Those, Attorney Dreschers were emailed to you today. If you didn't see your email, I have a few extra copies here. Revenues, last week, the board has sought to approve adjustments in three revenue account lines, which resulted in the addition of $5,361 to the projected 2012 revenues. This week, two adjustments require your authorization. One is in library revenues during the budget committee process. It was noted that the $1,300 should be $2,500, and the library agreed, so that's one adjustment. The other one is a transfer from trust and agency funds, because the budget committee was agreeable to adding the $50,000 back in for the HVAC units this year, and that has a $25,000 offset from the Mildred Stark Fund.
Okay, so you need a motion from us to approve the adjustments?
These last two, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, second by Dave. Any discussion? All those, Dave?
Aye.
Aye.
Is she unanimous?
Thank you. Petition articles, the town received four petition articles, two from Mill Foil, one for Christmas, Crispin House, and one for the tax cap. The first Mill Foil petition article, I had a typo. It also did not have enough signatures when the supervisor checklist wanted to check it. So the corrected one did have enough signatures, so that one will appear on the warrant.
So what you're saying is we received three technically correct petition articles? They met all the qualifications to be technically correct?
No. What I'm saying is you received three that make it to the ballot.
Okay. Nick?
First Mill Foil article didn't have enough signatures.
Correct.
And the second one, which was corrected, had enough signatures and was received in time.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes the first one moot.
Exactly, so that doesn't have to go on because there's not enough signatures. The problem this year, getting, you know, supervisor's checklist for elections all day and getting ready for elections, so it was tough to get him in here before the public hearing on it. Now, the corrected Mill Foil one still infers, I think, an appropriation for five years.
Multi, multi-year?
Yeah, which we can't commit the town meeting to.
Correct.
Unless it was a bond or a collective borrowing agreement, those type of multi-year agreements. But this has to be repaired at the town meeting to a $2,000 single-year appropriation. And I think the way we do it is, the word annually needs to be deleted, and then the last sentence should be deleted. The question is, who wants to repair it? Should we ask the petitioner to repair it? Or should the board repair it?
I believe that's appropriate way. Because if we start doing that on one petition article, and we don't do it on every single petition article that has a technical flit, glitch, all right, then...
Okay.
I don't think we want to go there.
All right. So we will call the petitioner and ask him to speak to that. Regarding the tax cap article, I've received legal opinions on the two questions we had. One was, when do you have that public hearing? And basically, it is, you count back from the official ballot date.
Right.
The lawyers were in agreement on that. So, here, opportunities for dates are between the 13th and 27th. Remember, the 20th is a holiday, that's President's Day, if you do it on a regular Monday night.
Right, so what we have here is we're going to the deliberative meeting with this on the warrant.
Yes.
And after deliberative meeting, we have a public hearing.
Yes.
And I think it's interesting, because there'll probably be more discussion at the deliberative meeting than there will at the public hearing.
I would assume so.
And potential changes.
Yes, the only change that can be made on that article is the actual percentage, because the other, the other language is set by statute.
Okay.
So, 13th with a snow date of the 27th for the public hearing?
Sounds good. Stay February 13th.
Yes.
Article number nine.
So we're going to have that at the, here?
Yeah, like you said, it's...
It's almost after the fact.
Right. The discussion will have been had the week before.
Right. Yes.
I'm not sure who's going to attend a public hearing after the fact unless something happened at the deliberative session, and that's why they want the public hearing afterwards. I don't know.
It's another opportunity that the petitioner may take advantage of, being it's a public meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Regarding collective borrowing agreements, the legal opinions are that they are public documents, ones they've been voted on by the union and the governing body to go forward to town meeting. We did, like I said, get a review of the warrant, and you have that email. Again, there's extra emails of Dreschers, because that just came in today.
Okay. Is there a question?
Are we going to discuss the other article 18? Yeah.
I think Attorney Drescher's point here, and I talked to him after he had sent this, and his point is, the board of selectmen in this town decides a default budget. If it's a reoccurring expense, the board of selectmen can put it in the default budget.
So it also, from his opinion, it states that even if you were to put language in the warrant, it's irrelevant.
It's not legally binding.
It's not legally binding, it is, it's advisory almost or something, I don't know.
Sense of the meeting, it's a sense of the meeting.
Yeah.
And DRA's opinion was, it's building a paper trail of support for it. But Attorney Drescher feels you really don't need that in there to include it in the default budget.
So we, it would be appropriate to include the nearly half million dollars from 2011 in the default budget?
I think, I think what we should do is, I think we should have this discussion after the, you meet with the budget committee.
The budget committee doesn't make a recommendation on the default.
No, they don't, but they're going to...
Yeah, but we, we asked them to, to place a million dollars outside of it as a, I just think, in this particular case, this is relatively, it's the first time I've ever seen a legal opinion on this. And I think it needs to play itself out in the sense that we should wait to see what the budget committee does, does tomorrow night. And furthermore, I don't know if I'm inclined to go and increase the default, even if they did or didn't, because, I don't know, I just, I don't, not after reading this. I, I don't know, I have some issues with it, but...
And the deadline, do you make any changes to default so you know, is before the ballots are printed, sent to the printer?
Right.
If you get new information that causes you to make an adjustment, you do have, it doesn't mean, it's not subject to the budget submission deadline of the second Tuesday in January, it's till the ballot's printed.
So if I could just add, so last year's warrant article, this is, maybe this is what you're driving, is last year's warrant article said something like, it is the desire to include it in next year's operating budget, which is what we thought would be construed as to putting in the default, but we didn't think it was legally enforceable. Now we're getting a legal opinion that says it's the prerogative of a board.
Right.
But, and then what this legal opinion says, even if you were to put in language that said, include it in the default, it would still be...
Same effect.
Taking the same effect.
Right, yeah.
All right.
Okay. So continue that discussion.
So I had no problem with Attorney Drescher's on Article 16, he said to add, be added to, so before the fire apparatus capital reserve fund, I'm at tab 16C in here, on the warrant, Article 16. So it would read, "To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $150,000 to be added to the fire apparatus."
Because it already existed.
Yeah.
Right.
So the board's okay with that change?
Yes.
All right. He also suggested putting finance software in quotes in Article 17.
Because you're creating one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, discuss that one, okay. On Article 21, he suggested, we just put chapter 231A of NHI, New Hampshire Revised Statutes annotated. He's suggesting we actually put in the IRSA 231-a colon to Roman I.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was it, no comments? So the board's okay with those?
Yeah.
Yep, no problem, great.
Sign application, planning and zoning received a sign application from the Goffstown Police Association to change their current sign to an LED sign, same size. Since this is on town property, Brian referred the application to the board of selectmen. Brian explains that the town is exempt from the zoning laws provided it is for governmental purpose. The content is restricted to governmental use, and it does not need to go to the planning board or ZBA. So I guess I need to know where the board stands on authorizing the replacement of the current message board with an LED message board. And if so, does the board wish to restrict its use to governmental purposes?
Nick?
Where this may be a longer discussion, we're at 6:30 now for the appointment, do we want to...
But it might be a very quick discussion.
Okay.
I, I consider the full operation under the control of the Police Department.
Well, the first sign was put up, donated by the Police Association, and they retained ownership and maintenance of it.
Right.
And first time around, I think it was generally for safety messages, is how it was worded. I haven't had time to look up the minutes, but that was the purpose for safety messages, but...
I, I have no problem with this. For as long as that sign's been up and I've been living here, I don't recall anything that's been controversial. It's usually something that either promotes something with regard to safety, it's a community event, I think it's, and it's a phenomenal resource for our town to have. So I am, I am totally in favor of it, and I, I think the LED signs are easier to change the message. I think it'll ultimately be a benefit to the community overall, so I'm in...
Well, yeah, just so that everybody's aware, the way that they operate that is that the president or the police association, so on, it's his duty to go out and change that. And it is a bit dangerous to change those, especially in high wind situation. And I don't see this as any differences, what's there, except it's, the only thing changing is the sign. The way you change the message on the sign is what's changing, basically.
Right. My question, the question is though, if, if it's not restricted to governmental purposes, then they have to go through a planning board and probably ZBA process.
And I thought...
No, government...
The Police Association's email specifically stated it was going to be for, also not, including non-governmental.
Nonprofits, yeah.
He didn't say nonprofits, he said non-governmental.
Non-governmental.
Right, which is nonprofit.
Right, which would then trigger it going through the planning process. And they're the owners of the sign.
Maybe the chief, when he comes up, can give us more information on this subject, because I asked him to.
One could argue that over half of the messages are governmental in nature, therefore justifying that it's exempt from the zoning.
Oh, it's governmental only.
Right.
Doesn't give a percentage.
Am I, am I being loose on the words?
Yeah.
Maybe the chief can add more to that when he comes up for highway safety, even before or after.
Okay, let's, let's table this for right now, and we'll move on to our...
We have two issues we achieve after highway safety.
Oh, you're welcome. We'll go to our 6:30 appointment, which is Police Chief Patrick Sullivan regarding request for Highway Safety Commission. And I'll turn that over to you, chief.
Thank you. On the 14th of December, we had several requests before the Highway Safety Committee, and I'll try to go in order here. The first was a dead end or no outlet sign request for the end of Durango Drive by MOSAT. The problem was, we had vehicles that were coming down Durango, thinking that it was an exit out onto the back road.
Mm-hmm.
The layout of the intersection tends to encourage that thought of people coming through, and GPS does... The layout of the intersection tends to encourage that thought of people coming through, and GPS doesn't always help because of the quick turn down to Catamount. So, the committee voted four to one to recommend the placement of a no-through-street sign at the entrance of Durango Drive.
Motion to accept the police chief's recommendation on the Durango Drive sign.
Give a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nick?
Just a quick, is the meaning the same, no-through versus...
Right, and I think it's also consistent with the signs that we have amongst areas. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Second request we had was from 39 Jasmine Lane for a blind driveway sign for cars coming from Heather Hill turning onto Jasmine. The committee met, discussed it, received input from the resident there, and we recommended, or 5-0 not to recommend the placement of that sign. It was, had been driven by, by committee members, and I believe it was direct inquiry that felt it was 90% a brush issue versus the, the road alignment.
Okay. Any input there?
Is it appropriate to make a motion to uphold it, or ask for public comment?
You can make them just like we did on the other one. Steve? Oh, okay. Alright, I'm gonna see that, okay. Is anybody from the public here that wants to make a comment on this? We'll need your name, you can come up here, we'll need your name for the record.
I'm Karen Henault, and the basic reason I'm here tonight is the safety of my two children, who I brought with me tonight. The cars, I know that they clock the speed at 37 as the highest speed limit for most cars. And they said that it is 35 in the neighborhoods, it's not posted anywhere, but they told me it was 35 miles per hour. I just, a lot of people are familiar, you know, with my house and know that I have children. But there's a lot of, you know, some of the teenagers just learning to drive, you know, sometimes they come down a little faster than, you know, maybe it is 37, to me it seems faster. And when they go out to ride their bikes, you know, turn on the road, they, they always look both ways, but, you know, again, I'm concerned with their safety. If cars aren't familiar with our driveway, coming around the corner there, it is cleared a little bit. There's some birch trees there that I really, I don't want to really have to take those down. But there is a clearance, you know, in the winter, of course, with all the snow, it's, it's hard to, even just pulling out of our driveway sometimes, you know, visibility, looking left. And I was just requesting a blind driveway sign, just, you know, I know it's probably not going to affect some people, but I think some people, other people that drive in that neighborhood that cut through, because I know we have a lot of people cut through to go to Maple Ave now, maybe that would make them more aware. And I just feel like it's, it's just a big safety issue with me. I do want to say, I had stated at the last meeting, our, our trash man usually goes flying down the road. And to me, it's fast at least. I was informed that there are big trucks, and sometimes they seem like they're going faster than they are. Well, whatever, besides that, I just want to say the last guy that came last week, the trash guy, it wasn't the regular guy, and he was going at a nice speed. So that was nice, you know, because even some of the FedEx, UPS, I think they go too fast too, you know? But, still, the fact is, I just, you know, I'm just asking for a blind driveway sign, so people are aware that there are, you know, that that driveway is there, and for the safety of my children. I feel it's a valid request. I know from the last meeting, the Parks and Recreation guy said he's really not into putting all these signs out. Well, you know, to me, you know, I'm looking out for the safety of my children. So, I think it's an important issue, it is to me. So that's why I'm here, and I, I hope it would be reconsidered. And they did put the stop sign down at Jasmine Hill and Heather Lane that was plowed, I guess by the plow, plowed over twice. And now that stop sign is back, I see, so that's nice. But, it's, it's an important issue to me, and I, I feel like, you know, it's being overlooked because they don't want to put another sign up. It's an issue of, oh, it's another sign, you know, so... That's what, you know, those are my thoughts, and, you know, I don't take it real lightly, because, you know, I don't want my kids getting hit when they go out on the street. And if there's something that is there that can deterrence people, or at least let them know, you know, they're aware of, there's a driveway there. It would, you know, would slow them down, or... At least they'd be aware of it, so, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
No questions, no.
Do we have a motion? Nick?
I just want to draw everyone's attention to the police officer report. Down the last paragraph where he states that people's reaction times and attentiveness while driving varies greatly, therefore recommends a blind driveway sign, and I, I think that may be a valid issue as well, because sometimes you're driving along, you're just not thinking, and you see a sign like that, and it kind of perks your attention, and, you know, you become a little bit more attentive.
Scott?
Yeah, I read that as well, but one of the reasons why I'm going to support the Highway Safety Committee's recommendation is that, and this, this instance is one of probably dozens, if not well over 100 situations that we have in this community, where we have driveways that are close to a bend in the road. I happen to live on a road where there is a rise in the road, where if you are traveling too fast, you won't be able to see kids on the, I mean, and I, and I think really what the issue is, is that people have to be driving prudently within the speed limit, which in this case, I think is 35 miles an hour. We had one vehicle go faster than the speed limit, and, and this particular one, and other others were going lower than the speed limit. I'm very familiar with the road, and I sympathize with the, with Karen and her husband. But I, I also think that it could set a very interesting precedent here, if we were to do this, there would be literally dozens of requests, because there are many, many winding roads in, in Goffstown. And I think first and foremost is that the brush, clearing the brush would, would, would be of a pretty big significance here. So I think that would be the, certainly the first step. But the other thing which was not mentioned, and which was done in, I think, your neighborhood and some others, is that we reduce the speed limits in some of these neighborhoods. That, to me, would be a better step than putting a blind driveway sign up, because Heather Hill and Jasmine and all those, there is a lot of kids in that area, and it is more conducive to a 25 or 30 mile an hour speed limit than, you know, than some other parts of town. So I would, I would rather see it go that direction than put up signs.
Well, can I, how will people know with the new speed limit? Because, like, in our neighborhood, I had asked, and they said, well, it's supposed to be in the, the manual, everybody's supposed to read it, and know that it is 35 miles an hour in resident, you know, residential areas.
They'd be, it would be all posted.
It would be posted in the neighborhood now? With the sign?
When, when you enter the town boundaries, typically there is a sign that'll say 35 miles an hour unless otherwise posted, and that's...
It's lower than 35, there would have to be a sign.
If it was lower than that, then there would be a sign in that area to say that it was, it's 25 or 30 miles an hour, anything lower than the, what is the townwide speed limit, which is 35.
No, we don't have a town...
We don't have a townwide, I'm sorry, state.
State.
Right.
It was an attempt to do a townwide.
Right, a 30.
There was.
A 30, right?
Four years ago.
How many?
Four years.
Four years ago.
Do you do townwide 30 mile an hour?
Yep, except otherwise, unless otherwise posted is what it was.
And you're talking about residential areas?
No.
No, it's the entire town.
Townwide, all town, unless it was posted otherwise?
Okay.
The, the Highway Safety Committee is discussing, but changes to a...
Bringing forward another...
Bringing forward a townwide reduction from, from the state mandated 35 down to something lower, which would necessitate, if it was approved, would necessitate signs on all of our boundary entrance points, and several other locations probably. But that's not the issue tonight.
No, that's not the issue tonight.
Right.
I just also like to point out to the board that there were five members present, this is a five-member board on the Highway Safety Committee, and they did vote 5-0 not to recommend this too, so...
I will support the committee's recommendation, but I would, because there's not evidence of speeding coming around the curve, as your house is on the inside of the curve on the, on the same side.
But how many days were they there monitoring the speed?
And...
I mean, that's, I think that's kind of...
Well...
I, my, that's the reason I, there's no evidence of speeding going around the slight bend as you're approaching your residence. But I would endorse that the Public Works meet with you next spring, after all the foliage has bloomed out, to clear what they're entitled to clear on the public right-of-way, on the inside of that curve. Have them look at that brush clearing on the public land. You know, they'll add it to their tasks, things to do late spring.
So is that a motion? To accept their recommendation?
Yes, I'll start off, a motion to accept the Highway Safety Committee's recommendation not to approve the placement of a blind driveway sign on Jasmine Lane.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Could we amend that to include directing Public Works to...
Well, what I was going to add to that in this discussion overhead, I think that, that goes to Public Works. Because as Dave pointed out, and with that diagram, and the diagram, I didn't see anything in there that said, I mean, is, part of it is in the public right-of-way, part of it might also be on private property. So, the Public Works would work with the property owner to determine what needs to be cut. Though Public Works can't cut what's on private property if something is deemed that needs to be cut.
My amendment was just to direct Public Works to clear brush in the public right-of-way line of sight. That they do have the ability, because in looking at this picture here, we're over the...
I would feel that the consensus of the board is for that to be done, and Sue can coordinate that with the director.
Right.
So then there's no issue of putting it in the motion?
It wasn't my intent.
No, I want to make a comment after the vote.
Scott?
I'll make a comment after the vote.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to amend it, to that direct, to that effect. Direct Public Works to clear the brush in the public right-of-way along that curve.
I'll second the amendment.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
That's the vote on the amendment?
That's the vote on the amendment.
On the amendment, correct.
Motion.
Okay, so now we're going to go back to the amended motion. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
So they'll be contacting me before they come and do this, or...
On public, on the, on public land, they may not, or they may, they'll try to contact you, but they don't have to contact you before they do it on a public land. But they'll be working with you in some regard to see, there might be brush that's on private land that needs to, that should be cleared, that they can't clear.
Now, they don't usually clear what they cut and stuff, do they?
What do you mean?
Because I've noticed before, they've come down our road and cut stuff, and they don't pick it up.
They should, if it's on the right-of-way, they should remove it.
Well, it also depends. Her point is, if the tree is hanging over into the public, they cut your tree that's hanging over the public, that goes on your land, because that's your, technically can't take that.
Yes.
Just like a tree is, your neighbor's tree is over your fence, what's hanging over your fence, you cut, but you have to put that on the neighbor's property. It's not yours, even though you cut it.
Because I noticed last year, it was, it was stuff close to the road, they just came down and cut it, and I know it wasn't on private property. It was pretty close to the road, they didn't clear.
I can't answer that question.
So...
But...
I, I will bring that message to Public Works, I'm, I have the...
Yeah, because I don't feel like I should have to go up and clean up what they do, if, if that's the case.
That if it's fully cut from the town property and not from a tree that's growing on private land, that they'll properly clear all the limbs.
Scott?
Yeah, just, you know, as, just a couple of experiences that I've had, as, as my kids were growing up, you know, when I went outside with them, and they were riding their bikes or playing outside, and I had a couple of teenagers who would drive rather quickly through the neighborhood, probably 30, 30 to 40 miles an hour. I did have a couple of conversations with those teenagers' parents, and they used to say, I know one of those teenagers lost a car for a month, because they were, they were traveling too fast. Another thing that folks do in my neighborhood is they put up those kids at play, and they, they put those by the side of the road, so that, again, it's a visual that helps. So, those, there's just two, two suggestions that, that you could do, you know, on your own, especially the kids at play, one is also pretty nice. People put them at the end, end of the driveway, or they put them, you know, you might, if it's, if it's your property, you can put something there while the kids are playing, maybe to give you some peace of mind. So I know it's worked in my neighborhood, it lets people know that they, you know, people have, where the rise of the road was, and it was helpful, so. Just brings more awareness to it.
Is the sign, is it, is it the cost? I mean, what are we talking for a sign? I mean, it just seems to me like it's a minute issue to me to put a sign up, I mean...
Well, if, if I, I can answer that, okay? And I thought that perhaps, and I don't know, at the highway, I've served on highway safety for many years. Those signs are informational signs, they're not regulatory signs. And those signs give people a false sense of security. That's one of the issues, that's nationally known, it's been nationally found out, it's information, that they are false senses of security. So if that sign were to be put out, that does not mean that who's out there is any safer with or without the sign. It gives a feeling, a sense of, of that, but it doesn't actually increase, and that's national sign statistics.
I, I agree with that, but I think too, that it could also, you know, one or two people might see that, and, oh, okay, you know? There's always some people that's going to see that sign and slow down, or just be aware of it.
Let's carry that one step forward, as somebody here said that, we get all those applications. So if you drive down, let's say, Terrell Hill Road, for example, and you saw 15 or 20 of those signs in that few miles of Terrell Hill Road, after a while, you don't even see those signs, the person that's driving. They mean absolutely nothing because they're all over the place. That's the unfortunate part of it. They give a false sense of security, people see those types of signs, they're not a speed limit, they're not what they call a regulatory sign. They're just an informational sign, and just people get oblivious, you'd be driving through town, and you saw those signs, and they just, your mind just blocks those out, out of your mind.
What about the speed bumps, where there's a speed bump in the road, and they have a sign telling you that speed bump? I mean, why do they have that sign, I mean, most people see that bump?
It's usually for the plow, when the road is covered with snow, so that the plow knows there's a bump that he has to raise his leg. That's what that's most for. knows there's a bump that he has to raise his leg, that's what that's most for, with that. But public works will work with you on that, clearing that, we've done this in different areas of town, and it's been successful.
All right. Well, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have a vote on the final motion?
I think we did.
We did.
We did. Thank you.
Third request was for a hidden driveway or slow sign on Henry Bridge Road in the area of one-twenty-one Henry Bridge Road. The committee discussed this and felt that a curb sign, one of those that indicate an actual curve, should be placed at the top of Henry Bridge Road closest to Center Street. The concern here was the construction of the curb, the lay of the curb, et cetera, as you come down, and we felt we should be giving people more warning as we come down, and we have experienced some accidents in fact.
Okay, and that's not what was requested, all right?
No, it was not. We voted five-zero to recommend that placement of that curb sign.
Thank you, chief. Questions?
Motion to accept the highway safety committee's recommendation for Henry Bridge Road placement of a curb sign. Okay, coming, excuse me, as you're in the area, after you're leaving the roundabout and proceeding downhill.
Can you hear a second?
If there were weak discussion with the public too. Second.
After the second?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the public who wanted to speak on this?
Yeah, I mean, as I said at the, the last meeting, my driveway's not hidden, so that was just taken around the table. I bought the house in July, I'm thrilled to be in Goffstown, I love my home, but I did realize after moving in how dangerously situated my house is, and I don't regret my discipline. But I think since I moved in, I think there's been three accidents, and ironically enough, that very night that I left the last meeting, someone hit my mailbox, because I think it's just right on the cusp of that turn.
Yep.
And someone just nicked it, and so I've just decided that I'm gonna have to put that into my budget, a mailbox every year, probably. And then there's, there was also another accident, unfortunately, when it got icy, somebody spun, you know, coming down that hill, and then around the corner, they spun, and the tail end of his pickup hit the telephone pole, maybe, or a tree across the road, so I think just some sort of, because as someone pointed out, it is a commuter road, it's very busy, something that just points out, like, hey, there's about to be a bend and a turn at the same time, coming from that direction would be helpful, very helpful.
Sorry, what was your name?
Erin Bouchard.
How do you spell that?
It's in the packet.
E-R-I-N-B-O-U.
She doesn't have it in front of her, though.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on the board?
Just a question, will that be a slow curve, or what type of?
It'd be just the designator of a curve, the actual returns, you see the yellow signs, the little diamond with the yellow.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So your vote is?
Okay, all those in favor, could you please raise your hand? All those opposed? Okay, a motion passes, three-two.
So Nick and Dave were no?
No.
Now Steve and.
Sorry?
Scott.
I'm dyslexic tonight. No, friends, don't.
The front of the table was yes.
Front of the table. So Steve and Scott were not?
He comes with her, too, he says.
Just wanted to comment as, as to my reason, I drive that road every day, and I just, and a lot of people drive the road every day, and it's, it's like many roads in Goffstown, where there's, it's, it's winding, and I just, I just, granted, you can make the argument that I drive it every day, so I know, and someone who maybe came from, you know, another town, and maybe used Google to get there, or Google Map, but I, I just think it's, it's just another sign that we don't need, and there are, I could put up another fifty of them around Goffstown that are just as bad, if not worse than that one, so.
Do the other spots have as frequent accidents?
Mr. Chair? Yeah. I, I supported that because, yes, every time I go around that corner, I do slow down and brake, but what I'm, my interest is the person that's not familiar with that curve, and perhaps driving it for the first time.
And if you're going the speed limit, you wouldn't have an issue, but that's besides the point, and most of the accidents, a lot of them happened during inclement weather, one of them was under the influence of alcohol, so, okay.
Scott, I, Scott, I respect your opinion, Officer Weeks came out and sat both in my driveway and at the bottom of the hill, the top of the hill, put in the big machine, and one of the things that he said to me was, you know, contrary to what you said, and that is that, I think it's thirty or thirty-five, is too fast in that spot, if you're going the speed limit around that bend, your wheels are gonna hit the yellow line, according to him.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I will move on to the next one, chief.
Okay, the final request that we'll address tonight is a request for a traffic light at the intersection of College Road and Mass Road in the area of Pizza Market, that area. The recommendation of the board was five-zero not to recommend the placement of traffic light. As a result of the corridor studies that have been done, there are higher priority intersections in town, and the committee did not feel that it was necessary at this point.
Okay. Questions, economists?
Recommend, a motion to accept the highway safety committee's recommendation not to have a traffic light at the intersection of College and Mass.
Second.
Discussion? Anybody here who wants to speak on it? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. And that was the final one, right, chief?
Well, there was one other one, that ordinance dealing with Prospect Street, it was drawn up Friday afternoon, and I didn't want to forward it up so quickly.
Ordinance on what?
The Prospect Street, the agreement between.
Right.
The parties, we had the no parking issue about a month ago, two months ago.
We delayed the enactment.
We had no parking.
Right, we delayed that?
We delayed it, and it was no parking on the funeral home side of that road. And we'll be coming back with another request for an ordinance change.
So they're working on that, that's the main point.
And you want to put, you want to consolidate all the parking on all of Prospect Street into one ordinance?
Correct.
Okay?
I'm just, I'm a little confused.
There was a.
Because I know we had, we, we have an ordinance with no parking on one side of the road.
Correct.
And then we had changed it to limit no parking on the other side of the road from a certain point down.
Down, correct.
Correct.
We delayed putting up a sign so that the property owners could work out. So are we now.
What he's saying is.
Enforcing it, or is there a whole new thing coming out?
What he's gonna do is they, everybody, all the parties are in agreement, and he is working on a change to the ordinance that he'll be coming back to us with.
To replace the two current ones with one ordinance showing the agreement between all parties.
Okay.
I don't know what it is.
I'm just, all right, because I'm confused, because I, I've heard things out there, the rumor mill, that, you know, parking's gonna be completely moved to the other side of the street, and.
Well, listen to the rumor.
Well, I'm just saying, so we're not gonna see a completely new ordinance and change for the third time.
But if we do, all the parties would be in here, green.
I don't know about green, yeah.
I can't tell you what you're gonna say.
There is a very good likelihood that you will see a change in the ordinance for the third time.
They recommended change.
Recommended change.
Right. Okay? Thank you. Does that conclude highway safety?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Okay, now, we were discussing prior to this, the sign outside the police station that was erected by the police association, that has town business and community messages on it.
Safety messages.
Correct. Scott?
From reading through everything once again, it seems as though the most prudent way of, of doing it would be to consider it a grandfathered sign that is now being converted to an LED, which, if this board approves it, it would then go to the planning board for a conditional use permit, which would allow them to replace their existing sign with an LED sign of the same dimension, which has been done for numerous gas stations and other, a couple of other businesses. That being the case, this would allow the, the police association to do exactly what they're doing now, whether it be safety, community, you know, governmental, whatever they want, and, and it would just require the planning board to grant them a conditional use permit, which, if we give our blessing in that respect, then it would go to planning board and hopefully get expedited for them.
Correct.
So with that said, I will, I will make that motion that, that this board grant approval for the Goffstown Police Association to proceed with a conditional use permit from the planning board to upgrade their current sign to an LED sign within the same footprint and dimensions as they currently have. I'll second that.
Okay, that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Unanimous.
So this is town property, and is the board going to regulate the messages on that board?
Gonna continue with the same.
Practice.
Practice.
As it has been.
Okay.
When it was first approved? How was it approved?
My recollection, I haven't found the minutes yet, but my recollection was it was safety messages, but we have gone beyond safety, and nothing's wrong with what they've done, they've, they've all been, like you said.
Well, they put announcements on there about dog licenses, they put announcements on there for, to remind people about their alarm permits.
I started to look it up, and as I recall, it was safety and governmental issues, so if it was dog licenses, or if it was alarm permits, or overnight parking, those were acceptable uses. Wishing Slug McGross a happy birthday on his way to work in the morning would not.
That would be fine with me if you wanted to do it.
It would not, it would not.
It's only one day out of the year.
And he is, he is quite a government entity.
Under the, under my understanding, the way it was approved, those were the conditions of its approval initially.
So that's still carrying forward, and the petitioners know that?
I spoke with the president, or the recently, as of Saturday night, past president, and he was in agreement that it would in fact be for.
You have a new president?
Yes.
Yes. That's spouses.
Oh.
So it would be for.
Remind them to send a notice to finance.
Governmental purposes, and, give me, governmental use.
Messages, safety messages.
Right, and community message. Nick?
When, when I voted for this, I was voting under the assumption that we were not changing the usage, it would be still the same usage conditions that were set when the board, when the.
Correct.
When the original board approved the placement of that sign.
Correct.
As did I, but I made the motion.
Then I, I guess I don't see why they have to go to the planning board.
Additional use?
Or conditional use permit for an LED sign?
For an LED sign.
You're not allowed to have an LED sign without a conditional use permit?
The town is exempt from the zoning ordinance, and so if it's for a governmental purpose, they don't have to go to the planning board.
I don't think it's a bad thing for us to go through the, the process like everyone else.
They didn't, wow.
Especially for something like a sign.
I don't, I, well, I also don't think that, you have it written that the association president does not believe that it's exclusively for government purposes, that there are some times where you might have a Crispin's House, something or other on there, which is quasi, I guess, governmental, but it just, it's cleaner, and I don't think it's gonna have any issues at the planning board.
So if it does?
If it does, then it comes back to you. There you go.
Okay, do we want to?
Because we're doing it as a courtesy, this is a, this is more of a courtesy.
All right, well, then that should be stated when you go to the planning board, this is courtesy, this is town.
Let me ask a question, who is in charge of waivers of those fees, is it the Board of Selectment or the Planning Board?
Planning Board.
I'm not sure.
I think it's the Planning Board.
For an application to the Planning Board, there's fees to the butters, you know, for mailing out certified.
All fees are set by the Board of Selectment, right?
The fee for the application of the permit.
The planning board fee, though.
Yep.
Or a select man fee.
I, I just have a question, just, I don't.
Well, I just wanted to, I didn't know if it's under the purview of the Board of Selectment, if this board wanted to consider waiving the fee.
I don't think so, it's an elected body, the planning board sets the fees.
That's my take.
By ordinance, aren't they?
Whoever sets the fee gets to.
Has to waive it if they want, and that's their prerogative, but I don't think it's, I don't think, I don't think we set the fee.
Okay, I thought we did.
I thought we did, too. When we revised all those fees, I thought we did.
You want just a, Steve?
Just probably more of a comment, I go through Penobell, I see these big iron signs that are on wheels, any kind of message, all these other people put up these signs, and, I don't know, I'm just looking at the police department one saying, we're gonna go to the same side, so we're just gonna make it easier to, to do it, I, I, I don't know, it looks like we're jumping, I mean, it seems like a lot of work, and we, the rest of the community is doing other things, you know, with any kind of sign, it's just, it's just, just a comment, that's all.
Nick?
I, I don't think it's to that, to the extent that you make it, but I do, I look at it the other way, LED signs, variable message signs, and I know there's a distinction between this one and, and variable message that changes frequently, has been a very controversial issue, in fact, it's gone to court, and I just think that on something like this, the town sets the tone by following the procedures that are in place, because you, I hate to have residents say, you know, I tried to get an LED sign, couldn't, but oh, the town put one up, they had no problem doing that. And we ran into the reverse, I think, with a couple of signs when we started using the, the variable message boards, highway signs for using, for our use, you know, we had some people falling in step behind that, saying, well, if it's good for the town, we're gonna do it. So I think as the town, we set the rules, we should set the example and follow those same procedures.
Nick?
I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, for, for what it's worth, I, I do think that we should go through the planning board, but I, because it is town property, I believe it is more, just like we've done with other governmental projects, it is a courtesy review of what's being done, but we are technically not bound by.
I agree with you there.
By themselves.
And that's the reason why I brought up the fact of waiving the fee.
I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think a twenty-five or fifty-dollar fee is gonna make or break anybody, I, I, I mean, it'd be nice, I guess, for this, for the association, but I think they're probably looking at a more expedited process where they can order the sign, get it installed, and, and make it easier for them, so.
Any other discussion on this? All set? You know what we're doing, chief?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I bet you if you asked each one of us, you'd get five different answers.
So you're gonna have no problem when we want to put an LED sign in front of Parks and Rec then, through a donation? You're good with that?
Are you gonna, are you gonna ask us to waive the fee?
Yeah.
See? Because it's Parks and Rec. Okay, moving on, we had the, we were in the middle of town administrator's report.
M-O-U.
M-O-U for the.
Well, that was part of the town administrator's report, so I was gonna say we were gonna go back.
He thought you were leaving.
No, 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 he's not leaving.
He was going to say MOU.
Yeah, right.
We do a lot of that, too.
Okay. Last week, we were presented an MOU.
6B.
6B.
Yep. That's in 6B. And by Vice Chairman Capasano, and it was to support Manchester's grant application for regional command vehicle. Okay? The chief did have a command vehicle in CIP, and
Could be a good thing.
Well, I guess this is a comment from the Town Administrator?
Which one?
This MOU does not detail any protocol regarding prioritizing you?
Yes, that was mine.
Okay. From that, and just so that everybody is aware that I did drop off the copy that I received, the MOU with the chief, since he is the emergency director of emergency management.
Now, I've given it some thought since our last meeting, and when you see these types of vehicles, you often see them used after like pretty substantial natural disasters, whether they be hurricanes, or tornadoes, things of that nature, where infrastructure is down, you're using satellites, and this thing, when you look at the size of this thing, it's a behemoth. And when I, you know, as I said last week, you know, when I think about this again, I mean, for our purposes, I think it'll be very limited having this, I mean, this, that, it is the size of this room, lengthwise, if not more.
I think you're exaggerating.
Really?
Yes.
What's the size of this vehicle?
Well, I think this
A power truck could fit in here, lengthwise.
I don't
This is only 20
Not fully extended.
Well, no, because you have side, you have side pullouts on this thing. My point being is that I would rather see, I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say that, but I'll do the math on the
The size of an RV.
This is a 40-foot, this is 40-foot, this one.
Right, and if you look at, if you look at, if you look at the pictures
The one you're looking at is 30-plus.
Right, it's definitely 30-plus. My point is, I would rather see if we were to pursue something in a regionalized effort and to reduce the area of worrying about prioritization of who gets this thing, when it's only one of them. You know, if you were to apply for a grant, if Manchester was, and to get two smaller command vehicles, I think then you would have a greater ability to share with surrounding communities than you would to get one behemoth. And again, that's just, that's just my opinion on it. So I think these things are intended when you have a natural disaster, and you literally are going to have 10 people working it, you're going to have satellite communications, you're going to have conferences in there, because you don't have, you don't have a physical building to be in on a temporary basis. This thing is huge. It's very big. I don't, I don't see why, how Goffstown's going to use something this big.
Like nature. I view this application as very clear upfront. It's at no expense to the town. However, Manchester would have an advantage in the application for the grant in that they'll be able to state that in the application, it's available for regional use, which would enhance the review of that application for a grant. And I agree with Sue, there's no direct words indicating the prioritizing of how the vehicle's going to be used in the various surrounding communities, but it does, it does hint at that in the last paragraph, where we would be, the town would be involved with updating the operating guidelines for the use of the vehicle.
Actually, there's something prior to that, and I mentioned, I think we discussed this last week, each town would be responsible for providing representation to a committee that would be tasked with designing the vehicle, coming up with the protocols for use, all of the items that we talked about, and as in the past, the state committee would most likely, if not will, put that in the conditions of the grant. So those things would have to be provided. There would have to be periodic training sessions for each of the community, exercises would need to be held utilizing the vehicle, so it would not be given to one community for their sole use.
The only, my whole point, though, is I think that we need to have emergency management, our own emergency management, look at this, and come back to us with a recommendation. I would believe that that would be appropriate with that.
Do you want to weigh in now? I've looked at this command vehicle that's proposed, and granted, it's not set in stone. And I think there's a correlation here that's being drawn, and I'm very hesitant to do so. The command post that we're looking for is under $100,000. It's not just the command post, it's evidence collection, evidence preservation. Most of the stuff in our present command post is evidence collection material. Will we be able to keep it in that vehicle and have it accessed by other agencies, if that's the case?
Well, I guess my question is, why does one preclude the other? If we're looking at two different vehicles, if one is more of an evidentiary-type vehicle slash command post, why does this preclude the other? I mean, I didn't, I didn't present this last week as
We were not going to, right.
We're going to take out this, you know, forget this, do this instead. I was talking regionalization, it's an asset that would be useful for all the communities, so.
Question, let's say if this was to go forward, like you saying didn't preclude from another vehicle, would it affect any grants if there were available for what you're speaking to?
It very well could. If we were to come up with a grant on a crime processing van or something of that sort, where it'd be regionalized, it may overlap some of the wording in the grant with this vehicle.
When do we have to make a decision on this?
Tonight.
Have you had any discussion with the signatures, signatories that are on this document that was presented to us?
I believe Chief Burgish had reached out to Chief O'Brien, trying to arrange a meeting sometimes early this week, and I haven't heard where that's at at this point.
Are there any other towns that this is going to?
We've had, I have the MOUs from Bedford, Auburn, Londonderry. I will be picking up Litchfield tomorrow or Wednesday, and Hooksit's an agreement, but they don't meet until the 25th. So they will, they can't get their formal MOU signed by their town council until the 25th.
So it could be five or six communities?
It will be five. Six, if
We go.
Yes.
And if we were to approve entering into this memorandum of understanding, we're essentially making a commitment to participate in training.
Training and exercises, yes.
And then according to that last paragraph F, the operating guidelines could, that operating guidelines could define how the vehicle could become available to the surrounding communities?
Correct. Typically, what's done is a operations manual, if you will, is developed, and then representatives from the community send, come in and learn how to physically operate the vehicle, versus, you know, not an emergency use, but in other words, how to drive it, how to set it up, how the generator works. And then the town would have an operator that would be
There could be an expense for having that vehicle, because it may come with its own driver, and the labor involved with that driver.
No, that would be a mutual aid, we wouldn't
It would fall into mutual aid.
We actually, emergency management brings their own driver to their command post. The DWI command post out of the state requires that we use their drivers.
They charge you for it?
Absolutely.
We've never been, we've used, we've used the state's assets before, and never been charged.
I would suspect Manchester would not let just anybody, no matter how well we respect all the other police departments, come pick up this vehicle at their garage and drive it over to our town. It would come with their driver.
I have a question. How does this go? I mean, if you're looking at a potential of six or seven communities, Manchester being the largest one, I'm assuming that in this agreement, Manchester's probably going to have more of a ability to use it? If three other communities put in a request, and Manchester had the request, it would seem to me that Manchester would have more of a weight on that decision that they would get it. And I guess the other concern that I have is if you go from, let's say, Auburn to Bedford, and then it goes to Goffstown, when Goffstown gets it, I mean, how does the maintenance? How do things get upgraded, or if something isn't functioning? How does it go from one community to another, and then how do you know where the problem developed with the piece of equipment that's on it? I mean, it seemed that, we've had this discussion on trying to take vehicle, we've had with vehicles from one town to another town in the past.
I don't think all those issues you brought up, Mr. Chair, are appropriate here. This agreement says all the maintenance is responsible for Manchester. They're totally responsible for getting the application in. What they want is for us to be a participant under the word regional, to enhance the status of their application, and the only obligation we have is to participate in training exercises, so that if we have a representative sitting in that vehicle, where that representative knows how it functions, and how to communicate back to our base communications.
Okay, but it gets back to my basic question. Who is going to be from our community dealing with this? Is it the Board of Selectmen that's going to be dealing with this, and the Board of Selectmen's going to determine who goes over there, who does the training?
Typically, that would be your emergency management.
Well, thank you. I think it's prudent that we have a recommendation from emergency management about this. I mean, here we are discussing this, and what experience do we have outside of sitting in emergency management operations when the chief has called instituted emergency management?
Chief, who speaks to that? I would speak to that.
And I think that it would behoove us to look to emergency management for some guidance and some recommendations, and some input on what we're going to do with this.
It's 39.5 feet. And that's just one of them. They're big. And one of the questions that I had was that, in a town our size, where we had people questioning the ladder, you know, the ladder truck, the aerial truck, if you get something so big, are we going to, I mean, these are all the questions that they ask yourself, is that, okay, can you get it to places? You know, and, you know, you see these, you see these pictures, and again, I hope that Manchester thinks about a smaller one, but these things are huge. I mean, how do you get them around some of the roundabouts? How do you get them through tight areas where
We have tractor trailers going around this thing?
From my standpoint, the roundabouts wouldn't be an issue. I see it, that we've had command posts in the recent memory of mine, mountain-based pond, we had a stabbing and a shooting. And for us, and this is a different type of vehicle, but we brought our command post up here, we collect evidence, we collect weapons, we collect blood, we collect all this other evidence. But how do I get that?
Correct.
On mountain-based pond road?
Right, but my, that's my whole point.
Right.
And Scott, to your point earlier, you know, if you have a hurricane, like we just had the ice storm, you typically don't have a command post. You set up your emergency operations center, because it's a community-wide emergency. If you had an incident at the high school, an active shooter incident, that's probably a situation where you would have a very large command vehicle, because you're going to have multiple agencies, state police, local, it's a larger, you could even have federal agencies, depending on the outcome of that incident. But you were correct, you could have an event where your police station, for whatever reason, is inoperable. That's the type of vehicle you can bring, and you can park, and you can, within a fairly short period of time, transfer your phone lines, transfer your radio equipment, so that you could then operate out of a vehicle like that. It does not replace the vehicle that you're going to pull up in front of a house because you have somebody barricaded, or a crime scene type thing. It has a different place. So I don't, there are currently nine of those vehicles throughout the state, the closest being Nashua. I think if you had an incident where a tornado went through Bedford, Goffstown, and Hooksit, and you needed command vehicles of that size, we would be able to get them in a fairly short period of time, but there would be one to rapidly respond to the community that needed it the fastest immediately. But those are the things that are worked out when you sit down and you develop the protocols for utilizing the vehicle.
I guess I go back to my earlier question, is Manchester interested in getting this very large scale, or are they, are they even contemplating getting, trying to apply for a grant that gives them two command vehicle, two command or mobile command, or three? Because when you look at this, when I read this, it said that they range in size, from smaller agencies would probably choose an upfitted SUV or Sprinter, that's too small for what, you know, while larger departments may require a tractor trailer, a step van bus or RV type body, and when it talks about the cost ranging from 200,000 to 800,000, you know, in this article, I wondered to myself, okay, you know, could you, could you purchase two or three, you know, medium-sized command vehicles that ultimately, all three may be housed in Manchester, but it gives not only Manchester, but all the surrounding communities a regional effort where they can then use it, and they don't have to worry about prioritization simply because there are three of them now. What are the odds of Manchester using all three at the same time? I mean, if I'm going to, if I'm supposed to endorse this as a Goffstown selectman, what's in it for Goffstown? And it would, it would be nice to know that if there were two or three of these things, there would be a greater chance that when we needed it, it would be available. When there's only one, I don't care if it's big, small, or a behemoth, then the odds that we would be able to use it diminish, because Manchester would have first priority, depending upon the scope of the event, et cetera.
And wouldn't you say you were going to be meeting with the chief?
He had contacted Chief O'Brien sometimes this week, early this week, I haven't heard
And we have to make a decision on this today?
Well, this is the only time the, I need to get them in Friday.
This Friday.
This Friday. So I don't know, if the board is hinging its decision on the chief's decision, or on the outcome of the meeting, you can vote conditionally.
I mean, I don't have any reservations. If Manchester's able to get this and they use it, that's great, if it helps them. Manchester's been pretty good to us, I think we have a really good relationship, and, but if we're going to
Well, but
I don't have a
We don't need, and I don't want to make it sound that way, we can go with what the committee, the communities we have now. I mean, if Goffstown does not feel like they want to participate with it, I don't want to twist anyone's arm, and I don't want to give that impurest. Say no. But we want an active partner in this project.
And for me, I think, I'm always speaking for myself, I would be, I'd be a very vocal advocate if I knew that there was more than just one of these things that we were sharing. But when it's one, it would be, you know what, I would endorse it, but I probably wouldn't be jumping in headfirst with it.
The reality is, the governmental side, they will not allow, they wouldn't give us two or three, they'll give us one. And in trying to fit all of the features, we're going off of the template of other vehicles that have already been purchased throughout the state, to try to fit in the communications, all of the various features into a large enough vehicle that people can operate in. all of the various features into a large enough vehicle that people can operate in. And that's where the price comes from. So, we could downgrade the capabilities of it, but we're still going to end up with one.
Okay, so, and that's, that's an important factor, though. So, if you're saying it's just going to be one, then-
It's one.
Steve, Steve's next.
Just my understanding of this at this point, I understand we don't know exactly what the model, what it looked like, and I do agree with Salk and Gross that it's good to work with other communities. I think there's only an upside regarding going forward, but the only reservation I have, I think, is with the chief, is that he's still looking for something to fit the needs of Goffstown, and my, so my main concern there is that, does this affect us going forward for something that we have more of a need for? And that's, in other words, if it doesn't, then it's a no-brainer, you know, it would make sense to support, to support it, as long as it doesn't hinder us down the road for what you're looking for. And that's my only comment.
Dave?
And I'm in favor of the MOU as it now stands. My only question is, when it comes, chief, when it comes time for participation in training, would your department be able to support that?
We would.
Thank you. I'm, I'm-
And I would-
To me, there's no need for any-
Training and exercises would be Homeland Security-approved exercises that allow backfill and overtime costs.
The only thing that I, one point I'm going to make, the chief, both chiefs have not had the opportunity to sit down with Chief Burkish, have this discussion, and have a full understanding or comprehension, because I have no idea what's involved in the training, because I know how we are low on personnel in our own community, and I don't know what the requirement is going to be as far as training. I don't know how that's going to drain our current resources, and what effect that's going to have on our ability to provide, to provide the safe, the safety services that we need to provide to the town.
If I may, let me make a suggestion. As I mentioned, we can go forward with the application as it stands now, if in the future, and again, this is a long shot, we may not even get the grant, it may not even be awarded. But if it is, and Goffstown wants to get in, I guess in the future, you could sign an MOU and become part of it. There's nothing that precludes that. So, we could postpone this, you could have the discussion with Chief Burkish at your, at your leisure, and-
Or vice, or vice versa, we could sign the MOU, and then we can, at later point, we can say, you know what, we're-
Right, and that does allow, but it sounds, there is, I hear reservation, and I just assume go forward without having it in place, or feeling like anyone was rushed, and-
I'm not feeling rushed, and I, I want to be able to support our neighboring community and to enhance the status of this application. And to me, I see it's one of the training, the potential of aid, but that'll all come, you know, use of the vehicle, but that would all come out with the training guidelines. And I'm comfortable with the MOU as it now stands.
Yeah, I'm now comfortable with the expectation. I mean, my whole thing was, I just want to know, were we going to be able to use it a lot? And I'm getting, I'm getting the impression that this will be pretty much under Manchester's jurisdiction, will probably be getting a relatively low priority, but it's not going to replace our current command vehicle. It'll simply be a good thing to have in the event of a large-scale incident, whether it be in Goffstown or any of the surrounding communities, the airport, other things, more regional. I don't have a problem signing it, as long as, now I feel more comfortable knowing that it's something that we may get to use, but probably won't get a whole lot of use out of. But it's a good thing for our region, and I think that's the most important thing.
Chief, do you have any comments?
I think it's important, as Salk and Gross said, that it's not going, it can't replace the vehicle we currently use. That vehicle is multi-use, multi-dimensional, and it's important that we maintain that vehicle in addition to being part of this.
This is a completely different atmosphere.
Different animal.
Right, but that, Nick's explanation helped me, because I was going in your direct, I was going in a different direction, saying, maybe we don't need to do this if there were two or three of these things around, and if we only have 15 incidents a year, then there would be the ability to use that most of the time. That's not the case, and I'm good with that.
Okay, but I guess the question that I'm not comfortable with is not knowing what the requirements are for training. I mean, is this something that's going to require two firemen and two policemen to go for two weeks for training someplace, or three weeks, twice a year? I mean, I have no idea, and I guess I, that's a concern. For something that we might use once in seven years, I don't know what we-
We can iron that out later.
Nick?
Yes, sir.
I see this type of a vehicle as 99% a communications command vehicle.
It does have communications capability in it?
Yes.
Yes.
And that representatives of towns with disasters could be co-located in this vehicle.
It would have interoperable communications capability, the ability to patch together various radios on different frequencies, so that the command staff within the vehicle can operate across all of the radios.
Steve?
I'm just trying to get a better understanding of that also. Can you name a scenario we've had in the past that this would have been utilized for us in that community? I was trying to get an idea, how big, big an event we would need, or if there was something in the past that we had that would have said, geez, this would have been a good fit, and would have been something we would have utilized.
How about when the guy knocked over the utility pole in front of the police department, knocked out all your communications?
All our communication wasn't out, but it, some of our phones were rerouted automatically over the sheriffs.
And that would have been an example. Within the communities, I can't, if you look across the country, you know, any-
So, it's wonderful, and I, I mean, I appreciate all your effort in coming here and bringing this forward, I'm just trying to get an idea. We're talking a large-scale event.
Yes.
And, and I think chief, is that correctly, we're looking, he'll still need another vehicle, and it doesn't preclude it, and I think it's a great idea to support the other community, just want to make sure that we don't lose track that, well, what's the best way to put it? I've always looked at the one vehicle we have, and it's, not to be mean, it's one, you know, it's one step above the Ice Cream Man truck, you know?
Hey, wagon.
Yeah, it's a sad-looking truck. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm going to call it what it is, you know? And I, so, I, 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 you know, I'm waiting for the good humor man to come out of that thing sometime, anyway. I apologize, but, but I'd hate to see us, I'd hate to see us thinking that, hey, we're in on this, and we're thinking that we're all set for a long time. I mean, it's something that we're not going to use.
And I should point out, the purpose of the Homeland Security grants are to develop assets for the event of a catastrophic-type incident. And that could be, as I mentioned earlier, something happening at the high school, something happening in a-
If I may, a tornado of vast swath across-
They have recently include, they have recently included natural disasters, yes.
A second plane into a highly populated area.
They allow dual use, so that it can be used on your routine incidents, but the primary purpose of that asset is for the catastrophic event. And that's why they mandate the training, the exercising, because they want that asset to be usable when it's needed, and not just sitting somewhere used once a year, or once every five years.
Could the chairman call the question, please?
I don't know if there is one.
Well, I wanted to find out what we were going to do as far as the chief, not, than not being able to meet until the end of this week.
I would say hold off. I think you meet all the needs.
If we decide to go forward, can this be added on to this?
Mm-hmm, I'm sure it could.
Scott?
I'm just going to refer to paragraph two, scope of the agreement. This agreement is applicable for the period of funding by the FFY, federal fiscal year 2011, New Hampshire State Homeland Security Grant, and for the useful life of the equipment, materials, and plans required. Either party, this is the key point, either party may cancel this affiliation at any time within 30 days' written notice. So, as far as I'm concerned, if we can't come to terms on the training, we can just say, you know what, the training is too onerous for us, we don't think we're going to use it, so we're done, and we're, and we're out. So, I don't think there's any harm there. It gives you, it gives either party a clear, a clear out, and I don't have any issue with it. I know, I have, I have a really good understanding of what Goffstown may use it for, it's probably very infrequent, but I think it's a very good asset for the greater Manchester area to have, especially in light of the fact that other parts of the state have it. We have an airport here, we have highly populated areas, you know, in this, in this region. I think it's a good thing. We probably won't use it a whole lot, but it'll help our, our partners in Manchester.
Do you have London, Derek?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I can understand London.
Well, Bedford and Hooks are high areas where you have commercial development, where you could have-
More with the airport.
Right.
I, you know, I see it more with the airport, so.
But we, you know, we happen to have county nursing home here, we have St. Ansem's College here, where if there were some sort of a large-scale incident, it's very possible, and our schools, it's possible that it could be used, and that's why I think we should reserve our right to be a part of it, although, like I said, it would be probably very infrequent, but...
And it would probably be better to go forward with it and then have to pull out rather than-
Right, than not, right. That's my take.
Because that would probably, it would probably-
Set a bad tone.
Yeah, yeah, that would, I don't think that would be good for Manchester.
If I may?
Go right ahead.
Motion to accept this memorandum of understanding for the 2011 New Hampshire State Homeland Grant, Security Grant.
authorize the chair to sign it.
Authorize the chair to sign it, and it's in a memorandum of understanding with Manchester.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hold in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Before the chief leaves, can I just ask one?
Sure.
I know we discussed this the last time we had highway safety. Is there a way that highway safety could meet quarterly? I mean, with the exception of our resident, our citizen representative, everyone else's staff, I see a request that came in in March of last year, and we're getting the recommendations now. I know we try to be responsive to the residents, and it just-
Well, one thing that I do have to say is that if you, you look at the paperwork that came in for the four highway safety requests that came before us, there's a lot of man hours that goes involved compiling this, okay? We have a lot of budgetary issues, we have a limit on how many miles each vehicle is being driven a day. You want officers to go out and do traffic counts, and we don't have enough officers to handle all the calls sometimes, so that makes things very difficult.
I agree, because this one came in the end of March, the officer went to see them April 8th, they did their survey April 12th. I mean, and that's what I think quarterly provides, everything was done with this by the end of April, yet eight months later, you're having your meeting and discussing it. Chief?
I understand that if you look at the larger picture, we have one in March, one in May, there were no others until October and November.
Okay.
So, we should, and I guess the thing is, we get everyone together to meet for one sign.
Well, I understand, that makes it convenient for the members, but you're all paid staff. So, if a resident puts in an application in March, the latest they wait for is the end of June, or your July meeting, so you meet, if there's no applications before you, no applications, or you don't even have to meet. But at least it doesn't give, I mean, I think eight months is just not responsive to the residents, and I think that's what we are here for.
Scott?
Yeah, I happen to agree with Nick on this one. I think it, I think it should be minimally twice a year, if not every quarter, and if there's nothing there, there's nothing there, but, and since most people are staff, I, my, here's my question, I have two of them with regard to process. One, how long are these meetings? How long does one application take to get vetted by, are we talking a half an hour, 15 minutes, an hour, three hours? Because if we're asking staff time, are we talking that you talk, you deliberate for 30 minutes, an hour per application?
I've attended three of those meetings, we were in session for an hour and a half each.
Okay, so I don't-
Maybe at the L-side, too, but-
So, you're, and those are probably a couple of, two or three each session, you're talking about, so it's about, probably about 30 minutes per app, per-
Between 15 and a half.
15 and 20 minutes per applicant.
Okay. So, my other, my other question, it kind of, it sparked me when you said this, Nick, is that what is the process, chief? Let's use this, this lady who came in, Karen Henault, she came in today about a sign. Does it automatically go through the whole process where you get the request to highway safety, and then you then assign an officer to do it? Or does it have to reach a certain threshold where you say, you know what, or it goes to the committee for a preliminary, saying, yeah, we're going to expen-, because we're talking about expending quite a bit of resources to do this stuff. And I guess, going back to what Nick said, it just came to my idea, I mean, maybe you get two bites at the apple here, whereby if you're meeting quarterly, and someone puts in a request for a blind driveway sign or something, it goes before the committee for a preliminary, little bit of discussion, and if the committee votes, we're not expending any resources here, the answer is no, then we're done. We've just now saved 10, 20, 30 hours of an officer's time, and then even, you know, more in the back end. And then if you say yes, then, then, then you do your full-fledged, you know, so you're getting, you know, you're almost vetting them. Now, I'm not saying that anybody here tonight, or any other of them, would never have passed the smell test, but some of them were like, there is no way, you know, you probably know going into it. So, is that a possibility? So, if you meet quarterly, maybe that's the time where you vet them, to see if you're going to do more of an extensive survey, and then you can then take up the ones where you have done it, and then you know that no person's going to wait more than three or four months for an answer on their, on their request. So, I'm, I think that's a-
And they have a set deadline.
Right.
You know, they put an application in in February, they know in March you're meeting, and that's where you'll vet it, and then if it's approved to go forward, by July, there'll be the final, you know, so they have a timeline, they're not just sitting there waiting.
That may save you some resources down the road, because you don't have the obligation of making that, automatically assigning it on ones where, you know, maybe the committee will say, you know what, we've been down this before, road before, and we're just not going to put this sign, and we're not going to-
Carl may say, according to the, you know, MUCT, the manual, that Uniform Traffic Code manual, we can't do this, and that ends it right there versus having, as you mentioned, radar.
The only issue I see is, if we receive a request in October, it's vetted in October.
December.
December. And it's a speed issue. We will not be ready for March. Radar trails put away during the winter, there's no radar trail.
And that's possible.
So, we'd be looking now at June. We have strived very hard to have them done twice a year in the past, these meetings.
But again, that's an exception, and you would be able to tell that person, this is a speed issue, so the earliest we're going to be able to get to you is-
Right.
-July.
That's-
But there's a schedule, people know when to, then, when to expect-
And the exception to that schedule is going to be, if it's, if it has to do with speed and, you know, with the trailer, we can't do that in the, in the wintertime, because we don't have the ability to use the trailer.
We will set up quarterlies.
Okay, we'll see how it works.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one more, one more comment on this. I got a, I had a conversation with one of the driving school instructors at the high school, Mr. Ross, and he commented to me about how he thought that there was a lot of obstructions to signs, especially stop signs, yield signs around the community, and this is probably more of a DPW thing, but it also involves safety, that there are a lot of signs that are obstructed, especially stop and yield signs, because of brush and, in some cases, it's personal. I'll give you one example, it's the one I go down every day, it's Tibbetts Hill Road. You go down the bottom of that thing, you don't see the stop sign, because there is a shrub that is pretty much blocking it entirely as you're coming down. You see it maybe 10 feet before you're supposed to stop. Now, it's a T, so you probably should do it anyway, but, you know, a- but, you know, according to John, he said there are numerous, you know, numerous, you know, stop signs that are, that are blocked, but the views obstructed. So if that's something that can be on D P W's radar screen for the spring, to make sure that, that we do a good job, making sure that people can actually see these signs, that would be very helpful.
D P W does go out and work on that stuff, and some of that stuff is things that are on, totally on private property that we can't touch.
Well, then, well, then, then, I don't, I disagree. Ken, is that true? I mean, if you have a shrub that has overgrown in the right of way.
Remember, we had a F Y I letter just a month and a half ago, Public Works directed a resident to cut down.
Right.
Two pine trees on a corner of an intersection because it was obstructing the view of people exiting that street. The landowner complained. So, yeah, it, there's a process in place where Public Works can work with a.
It all depends on whether the homeowner is willing to have their stuff cut. Otherwise, it gets very contentious, and we have several of those in town.
Yeah, I'm sure there are.
We can discuss it another time.
And I do know Public Works is having more interest in next year doing brush clearing.
Okay.
And to the point that it's going to be perhaps contracted out.
Okay. Are you all done with highway safety? The chief can leave?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
We'll see you next quarter.
Okay. Yeah, we're running a little bit late. Yep, 7:30 appointment. We're a little bit reversed. That's okay. 7:30 appointment, David Nieman regarding progress report on the Roberts Farm Conservation Project. David?
In that direction?
Sure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and happy Martin Luther King Day.
Thank you.
Bring in the chair up.
I'm David Nieman from the Conservation Commission. Also with me tonight is Ian McSweeney, who's the Executive Director of the Russell Foundation.
Yep.
And.
How you doing?
Good.
How are you? Last time we were, talked to the selectmen about this was, was in actually December of '10, and we came to you in a closed session, because at that time we were under negotiation with the landowners, and we, at that time, told you what we were up to, what we were talking about. And so now I'm back to just give you a quick progress report on what's happened and where we got to. It took a while to, to find a deal that would work for everybody and would be fundable. And so we finally reached an agreement in May of 2011 with the property owners, and they entered into a purchase option agreement with the Russell Foundation. We then applied for a farm and ranch land protection program because of the valuable soils that are on this property. It's the same program that we utilized when we did Shirley Hill projects in the past. That grant was kind of key, because if we didn't get that grant, there was really no much point going on. But if we did get it, then it was, you know, a basis to do further, pursue further funds. We won that grant award, and it was for the amount of $760,000. Now, I've handed out this little handout to you, and you'll see in the image, when you look at the Roberts Farm area, that there's, it's kind of divided up into two areas in two different shades of green. And really, this has to do with the funding and the nature of the easements that are being used to cover this, this project. So the lighter greens labeled farmland easement, that's land that the Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program grant applies to. You know, they only pay for the valuable soils and a buffer area around them. So money from them doesn't cover the whole site, just that portion and that, that shade of color. The other portion of the land, the darker green, is labeled the community forest, and we're seeking other sources of funding for that. So really, the project, if you will, is, is being turned into two projects, because there's different funding sources that can cover those different aspects. From the towns perspective, it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference. It's the same as the, the overall description, in that the working farmlands and fields will be protected and be preserved, and the forested area can become a community forest that can be managed for two purposes. One is continued timber harvest, like there always have been on this property, which would be a source of timber tax revenue to the town. But the other thing is that this would be opened up by the owners, and the owners would become the New England Forestry Foundation as a public recreation area, and with developed trails, with parking lots, fairly well-developed site. So we're also working with the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests, which would hold easements overall in addition to the farmland one held by the, the federal government. And we're working with the New England Forestry Foundation, which will, not only will there be easements, but the dark green and, and some of the lighter green area, they will actually purchase that land from the family. The family will retain a couple of lots where the existing farmhouse is, but the conservation easements will cover most of their lands. They'll have like two 30 acre lots, but they'll, with the exclusion of the building envelopes, that'll be in the conservation easement under the farmland. The section down in the bottom left corner is an excluded area that's not part of this deal at all.
The portion outlined in red?
Yeah, it's, it's white and it's outlined in red. So it's approximately 50 to 60 acres. I say approximately because, you know, the survey hasn't actually been done, and the lines, final lines aren't yet drawn.
And what happens to that? Nothing?
The agreement is that they would, they would agree at the time of the subdivision to make this possible, that that would be restricted to no more than four lots.
So that portion is developable?
That portion is developable, and it could, you know, go to whatever purpose, but no more than four lots.
Even though it's 50 acres?
Mm-hmm. There's a couple of red symbols on either side. Those are just to indicate potential parking lot areas for the community forest for public access. The most likely one would probably be off Rainbow Drive, because that's just, you go right into the property there, off of that cul-de-sac. It's, it's a perfect setup. So this list of partners continues to expand, and we've been working with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, who introduced us to the state's Scenic Byway Council program. So the John Stark Scenic Byway, which you're all familiar with, of course, there are funds in Washington and allocated to the state to pay for projects that enhance the community byways. This site is not directly on the byway, however, the access to the byway, almost everybody who's going to come to the byway is going to come at 114. They're going to come from Manchester, they're going to come from points south, and they're going to pass access points to this property on their way to the byway. The state scenic byway council agrees that this is a good idea, and in fact, the way that program works is, they really apply for the grant, they, within the state, projects are offered, they pick the project they want to support, they usually do one or two a year. They picked us. So another grant application has been submitted to the federal scenic byways council. We asked for $556,000 from that grant. After we got the, the Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program, we, L chip, there was a funding round, probably the last one for quite some time. We applied to that and received a grant award of $50,000. We applied to the Moose Plate, License Plate Program, Conservation Program, and asked for $30,000, and we received that award also. So that's three grants that have come in so far. And then there's another initiative, which is in the development process. This is a regional initiative that's being spearheaded by the Forest Society. I, this is still in the works, so I don't know if this board has ever been briefed on it yet. They're kind of going around to different communities. But it's called the Merrimack Valley Regional Greenway. The idea behind, behind that program is that they wanted to do something for the people in the Merrimack Valley, the most densely, one of the most densely populated parts of the state. And they looked around and said, what could we do? And, and noticed that, starting in the Manchester area, we have all these bike trails under development. I mean, Manchester's incredible network, Auburn and Goffstown, and we're going to be linked to them after the bridge is built next summer.
Mm-hmm.
And our own rail trail course is still under construction. So they look at those corridors, and then they looked at conservation areas and thought, what areas or what projects would be good to link to these corridors, to make this a more cohesive thing, where, you know, you could get on your bike, you could ride out to Goffstown. What are you going to do when you get there? What endpoints, what destinations? And they looked, we offered the Roberts project up to them, they looked at it, and they think it's a great fit. So as that plan is being developed, that's the first action plan, and that plan will be to pursue work on completing this. So that and the John Stark Byway Council, if we get that grant, I mean, not only will we get that grant, but it'll make this project into regional significance, which opens up doors for further outside funding and other grants that we can apply to, and also private fundraising. So that's kind of been our strategy, is to, is to form these alliances with, with all the other groups in the area, and, and build this up into something that will really enable us to, to bring in the outside funds. That's kind of the whole thing in a nutshell, that's what we've been up to. As, again, as I said, we've received the three grants so far. We have the grant out pending with the byway council. On the second page, I, I gave you the list of the, the estimated project expenses, including the acquisition amount, and that acquisition amount reflects both conservation easements and also land purchase area, but the part that becomes a community forest. And then the rest of it is all various things. The acquisition amount is $2,829,400. By the time you put in all the expenses, it gets at just shy of $3 million. It's $2,939,900.
Chair, a couple of questions?
Questions?
Yeah. David or Ian, if, can you just break down a couple of things, if you may, for me? Do you know how many acres roughly the community forest portion is?
Yeah, it's about 220.
Okay.
And 190 for the other, the farm.
Okay. And Mike, Mike, just so that I'm, I'm clear on this, are we outright purchasing, not, not us per se, is the national, what is being, what is being easement, what is being purchased through the Forest Society? If you can just recap that again for me?
Well, so, so all of the community forests, the 220 acres.
220, okay.
Is being purchased outright.
Purchased outright.
By New England Forestry Foundation.
Okay.
It'll also have an, the, the total will have an easement on it, but, but that will be purchased outright.
I got you, okay.
And, and then a portion of the farmland easement land will also be purchased outright. So that, that total, more than 220, the exact line above that will be determined by survey and so on, but will be purchased outright.
Okay, I, if I could.
Yep.
I can, I, I totally understand the, the community forest portion. 220 acres is going to be owned by the Forest Association, New England Forest Association, I'm good there. Now, in terms of the farmland easement, now does that mean like these typical developmental rights, that the Roberts family will continue to own the land, but some entities are now purchasing, they're buying the development rights?
Correct, yeah.
So the, the Roberts family still, would still own it?
Correct.
But yet, they're just selling the development rights, which means that nothing can ever be built on it in perpetuity?
Correct, yeah. A, a portion of that, that's, that's completely right. A portion of that, 190 acres, will also be purchased outright by New England Forestry Foundation, so.
Roughly, do we know?
No, because it, it, we will when we do the survey, the, the survey, the lines have to be created as to where the soils are, the farmland soils, and then what's approved through the federal government, through the Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program.
Now, if I have one more follow-up, if I may. Kind of going back to, I, I know that, you know, we, we have some folks who do community farming next to the police station. In this particular instance, though, we're, we're buying the development rights for the majority of that land. There will, is there any opportunity, since it is farmland and probably good soils where, whereby it could be used as a community garden for Hillsborough County, or?
Yeah.
Or no, or?
I'm following you exactly. So in this, again, we're, we're showing you this layout, because this pertains to the funding and how it's being paid for. And as Ian mentioned, much of the northern swath of this farmland part will also be owned by New England Forestry. The fields that are closest to the road, I mean, those are actively farmed.
Right.
High fields and, you know, by the hay and hayes hardware even. This northern part of it, including that arm that sticks up.
Yeah.
There's a prime farmland soil field, a large field in the upper part of that arm. That's why that's extending up that way. That part will definitely be owned by New England Forestry, and that's one of the things we've been contemplating is, well, that field, you know, it'd be better to keep it open as a field and perhaps use it for community gardens if for some reason we don't.
It's a, it's a growing, community farms, it's growing rapidly across the country, and there's a need for it. And there's a lot of people who want to grow their own locally grown organic produce, that type of thing, and I think that would be a, a selling point for the project.
Yeah, by all means. And we've, we've, the, the main reason that northern field is not being farmed now is, is, is because of abuse by non-authorized people going on the land, using it for things that the family, the Roberts, is not giving them permission for. So it's quite rutted up. The farmer who farms the rest of the field, along Addison, gave up farming that field years ago because of what was going on there, the, the uses. The, the hope is that, that bringing in these conservation groups, bringing in local interests, we can restrict the uses to only appropriate uses, so that field can then be used again for agriculture. That, yeah, by all means, it's, it's a great field. There's, there's letters, the Roberts shared of, of their family and other families using that field to harvest pumpkins and corn into late October, which is pretty amazing for the time. But so, that would be the goal of some act of agricultural use for that.
We have actually discussed this with the New England Forestry Foundation, and they're very open and receptive to that idea, because they ultimately would be the new owners and managers. But they like that idea, because they, they want this site to be a demonstration project, because most of their holdings are like in northern Maine. They're, they're actually the biggest land trust in New England, and you hardly ever hear about them, because they have large tracts up there. What they would like here would be like, in addition to the recreation trails, they'd like to be able to have trails that say, look, this is how sustainable forestry can be in harmony with recreation. You know, it's a good thing for their organization. And the community farming thing would just mesh with that as well.
Yeah, they, they, New England Forestry Foundation, land they own, they, they have over 700 acres that's actively used for agriculture by third parties that they, you know, either handshake or lease out to them. And, and they have three CSAs, Community Supported Agricultural, on land they own. So they're big proponents in supporting that.
And that field is prime farmland soil. It's the best soil, one of the best fields in town.
I just have one more, but I, I know we're going to get the question about hunting. In the community forest, sounds as if, though initially, you talked about more trails, which would not be, the, the original intent would really not be for hunting purposes, but it might be more for hiking, biking, that type of thing. Would, would there be any restrictions of, on, on hunting? Because that's, we're going to hear that from our, from our constituents.
We have no plans to put any restrictions on hunting. I mean, it, so far, it seems to work well in all the other conservation areas in town. I mean, Unka Nunnix, there's hunters up there, I encounter them frequently. I don't see any real reason that there has to be a conflict there.
I'm good, thanks.
David, I have a question as far as parking, because you note on here that the deed is, needed access to the rail trail which goes down, and that's quite steep going down that Kent Kennedy Hill Road there. Where, if, if this. Where, if, if this gets eventually connected with the, as a destination point with the scenic byway, I would assume, well, there's, there's two access points that I'm aware of. One is that, that right away there, the access trail that you're talking about, that's Down Kennedy, or Addison Road, from, through Addison Road. Do you have any areas in here that would be parking areas for the access? And where would they be?
We, we see access several ways, the, the people driving to the parking areas, which is your immediate question. And in this map, there's these two little symbols with the red on either side. One is at the top of Rainbow, and
Right.
There's an access road that goes right into the property right there. That would actually, that would almost certainly be the one to go for. It's really good. But another possibility is Kennedy Hill Road, which, where the symbol is on the map is kind of the point where it changes. To the, to the south of that, it's, you know, an accessible road, town maintained road. To the north of that, going down to 114, is actually a very steep ledge. It's an abandoned, well, not abandoned, it's a class six. But that is so steep, so it's hard to imagine it was ever a road. It's amazing. However, that could be an access point via mountain bikes or hikers coming up from the rail trail, the, the class six part of the road. And then this other part, the dashed line, the deeded access, first of all, let me just say that that's an approximate line, because
Right.
That hasn't been surveyed. But there is, the properties above that, there is deeded access because that used to be a road. There used to be a historic inn, the Scribner Hill House, which sat up on the hill on the property. And the road that came up from the, you know, the tourists that came in by the train, the train station in Grassmere, they would come up that road. And so when the land was later conveyed to other parties, that, that easement where the road used to be was, was kept by the Roberts family. That, that access may never be used, may never need to be used, but it's, you know, it's just there. I, I can't see that being anything more than a hiking or mountain biking trail, however. Nobody has any thoughts of, you know, auto access up that. But the auto access, again, could be off Rainbow or off Kennedy Hill, off Addison.
Okay. Scott?
Yeah, it's, you note on here, there's a Grand George easement. And then I, I wonder, has there been any discussions with Hillsborough County with respect to their abutting land? I know they had a charrette a year or so ago, which I wasn't able to attend, but has there been any discussions about even using that little, or Hillsborough County maybe conveying some of that, that property to make it, make it an even larger area that is quote unquote in preservation?
Both good questions. I'm sorry, I didn't mention the Grand George easement. The Grand George family basically decided last year, if you're going to do this project, then we will, we will pledge to put the forested part of our land upon Yakum Hill into an easement to support it. Because that, you know, when you're making grant applications, say, oh, we have a matching grant being donated, that, you know, it's a great thing in your application. Well, they did it. In fact, they, they've already followed through on it. It's, that easement was recorded last week of, of December. So that is an actual easement now. And that is?
Say the name of that was, Yakum?
Yakum, Yakum. I've heard it pronounced both ways.
Y-A-C-U-M.
Need an official
U-M?
Lifetime resident to practice on pronunciation.
Like vacuum, but.
Yakum. Back.
So David, was that easement, Grand George easement accepted with a public hearing and everything? Did it go through all the requirements?
Oh, that, there was no town funds, no, this was completely by them with the New England Forestry Foundation. So there was no public hearing because there was no involvement by the town, no spending of town money at all.
Any land rights given to the town requires public hearing, I believe.
Yeah. Those land rights weren't given to the town. The Grand George easement is with the New England Forestry Foundation.
Oh, it's not with the town?
It's not with the town.
Okay.
Party in funding or receiving any rights.
Okay.
They are benefiting, and now the land's conserved, and it's benefiting the public for many reasons.
I had a question on the grants that you've already received. Is there a time limit on those for you? Because.
Do they expire all?
We can get to that, but back to the county
Yeah.
Question that we, we've discussed internally that it makes sense, but haven't made an approach to the county. Didn't know if, A, it's the right time, and B, if, if they'd be receptive to it, but if, you know, any insight or support you may have would be.
David, do you know anything?
David, I, I suspect you have a copy of the charrette final report.
Um, yeah, not unless it's online. I don't think I have a printed copy of it. I know it's
It's not online. I know I have a printed copy, because I was on their steering committee.
Yeah. No, I don't have a copy of the final report.
I'll need to coordinate with you.
Okay. I, I know that the, the outcome was somewhat mixed in that there's multiple purposes and for different parts of the land. There's the obvious development economic potential along 114.
If my memory serves me right, the, the rectangular shape that's right under the words hills in Hillsborough, I believe that parcel was relegated to, like, we don't know what to do with it, so we'll just not do anything at the present time. Maybe somebody 100 years will know what to do.
That, that, that particular piece right there would be an excellent fit because it's
There's a lot of power lines.
It's right there, and yeah. Yeah, that's right. The power line does kind of come down through it. But it, it would make a lot of sense, I think. But we, no, we haven't yet approached the county, and we've just been trying to sort out this first part first.
Much of that was because it's very interlaced with wetland, as well as severe slope and bolder outcrops. Not very useful for development. It's a mixed terrain.
Very mixed. Yeah. Good for growing forests, though.
And I think that has a lot of fernal pools in it too, that.
Yeah.
Scott? You know, one of the reasons why I, I spoke up against, spoke up with regard to Hillsborough County land, because there was a point which I still think that our town should pursue, and that's the, the community farmland adjacent to the police department. I, I think that's, that, that land would be very well suited for Goffstown to hopefully maybe have ownership of. But the concern, I think from Hillsborough County, there's a couple of them, but one of them is that it's for community farming, and how do you then substitute that? And if there were the ability to have community farming on that, on, on that property that you're talking about, which would probably be like 10 times the size, if not more, then I think that would, it would certainly make up for it. But I would encourage you to, to speak to Hillsborough, because I think it's a natural fit. It's right, it, it really is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and there's a kind of a confluence of similar and interrelated, and yet different interests in this whole area with the rail trail coming through, the Byway coming through.
It's what Selectman Pierce said, if, if they kind of punted on what to do with it, and now you have a viable plan here, then it may make sense for them to say, hey, you know what? Let's, let's get in on this.
And that's a section that's not included in their rezoning request.
That rectangle there that we're describing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I think, I know it's, it's long been a goal to try to stimulate some economic potential with our recreational facilities, and we've certainly been some major improvements to help along that with the trail updates and the signage and things. This Greenway thing, I think, will really go a long way to addressing that because it's going to make it a regional issue. It's going to make people aware of it. It's going to be very well publicized, and, you know, there, there will be, hey, in the Merrimack Valley Greenway, this is where you go for recreation. And for us to get on the ground floor of that, I think, could be helpful towards those goals that have been discussed in the Economic Development Council the last couple of years.
For $250,000, the town could finish the whole rest of the rail trail. We're just nibbling away at that expense year by year.
Yeah, well, the, the Greenway initiative may help with that, too, because it's going to, it's going to bring open some funding sources that otherwise wouldn't be there because people are going to, people that don't necessarily invest in land conservation per se, or this or that. If it's a regional thing, then they're more interested in some of the larger private foundations. They don't want to be part of a small project, they want to be part of regional initiatives. So that's part of the logic for structuring it that way.
It, it may help, too, with the, the scenic byway grant, that if we receive that, that we, we're told by the state DOT and Byway Council that mentioning the, the TE funding that the rail trail got, because it bookends the Roberts property on either side in our application, and that helped us on the state level. So I, I think the reverse would also be true, that if we receive funding from the Byway to go back with the rail trail saying, you know, the, the Byway just funded this, and now, you know, we're building on something larger than just a piecemeal approach.
And you had questions?
Questions on if there were any deadlines to these grants?
Right, deadline question.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, there are. I mean, there's, essentially, we have until early 2013
Okay.
To, to get this up. So we, the time of the agreement was in sign, what was put into place was a two-year window to see if we could come up with the funding. So after the first six months, we're well on our way. The, the final page of this handout kind of summarizes that, where we are, where we think we'll be. If, if the scenic byway grant is funded, so that's a big if, because it's $554,000, it's a big part of this project. But if that is funded, then that'll put us up just over $2 million. So that still leaves us $860,000 to come up with, but we still have many, many more grant applications to write. There's a lot of other organizations and private foundations. But the good thing is, is that as it builds, it, it gets easier, because a lot, a lot of organizations, they don't want to commit to something unless they think it's going to succeed. And so every grant that you bring in makes the next one just a little bit easier to secure.
So is the Merrimack one not on this page, David? Merrimack Valley?
No, that's just a, a planning initiative right now. There's, there's funders who are providing funds to that initiative, and, and they're interested in funding projects as well. So that will open the door to future funding, but it isn't a grant round that we receive funding yet. It's just that we're a priority on that, the planning process.
But also for all the other grants that we apply to, that is something you mentioned, say, this is part of this regional plan, and it just enhances the value of your application quite a bit.
Any other questions with David?
I assume we would wait to do any public hearings until this whole project comes together totally.
I would imagine, yeah.
Scott, you had another question?
Well, I mean, question or comment, I don't know how, I mean, you know, when I look at the, the funding, the, you know, projections, you would pretty much wipe out the conservation fund with this. And I assume the Conservation Commission is comfortable with, this is it, you're throwing all your darts at one target here, and?
Yeah, in, in the past, and when I've appeared before this board, I've, I've always maintained that we always want to keep something in the fund because you don't know what's coming up or what's in the queue. There's always potential things, you know, we have these private discussions with landowners, and they're thinking about it. In the past, there was always something in the queue. There isn't now. So there's, there is, we don't see an immediate project beyond this one.
So it seems like you're all in on this one?
So we're all in on this one. And the, and the Conservation Commission supports that. That's why we put, I think, under status CC supports, that's not CC approved, because nothing gets approved without the appropriate public hearings.
Now, I'm sure you're aware of the pending legislation up at the State House regarding conservation funds and land use change tax.
Yeah.
How would all of that, if that ever passed, how would that impact this project?
That's hard to say, because, you know, if it went into effect, say it passed, heaven forbid, the land use change tax, I assume that would be going forward and not being retroactive.
Yeah, that's 2012 forward.
Right.
So existing funds would be impacted. The only thing that would be impacted
The ability to use the funds.
Maybe.
Might be impacted.
Depends how it's written.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to discuss what could happen when you don't know what the outcome is.
But the, not related to this project really, but the potential larger project, as we talked about the county land, that there's legislation that the county could not place conservation easements on any of their land. So if that passed, that would take that potential off the table. But this is privately held land purchased by private nonprofits, so there's other legislation now that would restrict conservation commissions and towns from conveying easements on existing land they own, or from acquiring land. But the only one that would impact us would be the land use change, but that's 2012 some month going forward, I forget, but.
And in our budget, I mean, we don't, we didn't put in an amount for future accumulating land use change taxes, because it's so hard to predict. And, you know, the last couple of years, it's been very, very small, so it's, if it continues that way for the next year, it's not much to, in the big picture, you better be looking somewhere else.
Scott, you had another question?
Just one last question with respect to the acquisition amount. I remember, I think the last time you were here, that there were, not surveys, we're still looking for it, appraisals?
Appraisals.
So you did, how did that work? I mean, I assume that appraisals were done on the property?
Yes, well, yeah, so appraisals were done to, to justify this purchase price. There, there will be further appraisals needed, that a summary appraisal was done, which is much less rigorous, there is much less detail provided in the actual appraisal than what federally would be required for them to release their funds. So there'll, there'll be a more comprehensive appraisal done going forward, closer to when the closing date is, because it has to be within so many days of closing. But we do have initial summary appraisal now, which justifies this purchase price.
Mr. Chair, could I request, or could the board request a copy of the appraisal that was done? I'm assuming it's a public document at this point, or?
I don't know if it would be. I don't know if it would be a public document.
Yeah, I, I don't see a big problem.
If it's not, then we can keep it.
Sharing it with you, but it isn't a public document, that all contractual and other things that have been done have been done between the Russell Foundation, private entity, and the landowners. So it's, the town didn't pay for it, the town's not named in the appraisal, the town wouldn't be the purchaser of, so that, you know, but, but I don't have a problem. I'd, I'd have to talk to my board and to the Roberts family.
Right, and Ian, I think the reason why I'm asking is that ultimately, the town will be purchasing something, easement rights, et cetera. So that money that's in the conservation fund is not, it's the townspeople's money per se.
Yeah.
And at some point, they're going to want to know, how'd you arrive at the $2.8 million?
Yeah.
What part of that is earmarked for the outright purchase through the Forest Association? And what part are we spending on the developmental rights? And I think that's, that's going to happen eventually, so.
Yeah, well, and, and the full intention is to, right, have all that information public at some point, but what time to make it public is just the question.
Okay.
We're still fairly early in the process, but.
Okay.
So you want to have a request for it?
I mean, personally, I can't speak for the board. I mean, myself, I would like to know what the breakdown is. How much, how much was the appraisal for the property that's being purchased outright? And then how much is being, what is the, the price tag for the developmental, development rights piece of the easement?
But once a quorum of this board receives that, it is a public document.
Right. But it's going to be a, it's going to, it's going to be a question that's going to come between now and next March, because next March is going to be a vote on this. Hopefully you'll have your secured funding. So whether it, whether this board gets it in a month, or whether you get it, or we get it in 10 months, I, I mean, in practical terms, if, if the Russell Foundation, the landowners, were not to provide the appraisal and to wait to the last minute, you would really hurt your chances of communicating with the community and trying to sell the project. If it's upfront and, and, you know, then you can kind of have those discussions that here's, here's the methodology, there's no, there shouldn't be any secrets here.
The only time it goes to town meeting is if you're raising money through taxation.
Yeah, just, just declared, first of all, I perfectly understand what you're saying, and there's no disagreement with it. Ian, when you ask him the question, can I hand you the appraisal? Because he represents a the appraisal, because he represents the board and everything, he has to have...
Oh, he has to ask his board.
You know, it'd be like me saying something that, yeah, the selectmen will give you this. I can't do that. I have to come to you and ask. So, that's the only reason for hesitancy in the answer. The rules and regulations with the federal grant, just like when we did it on Shirley Hill, as Ian mentioned, there has to be a final appraisal within a few months of the closing date. But, you know, you have to have a preliminary appraisal to know what the heck you're even talking about to apply in the first place. So, there's a preliminary appraisal, which is not quite as rigorous or as detailed as the final one. And that's what he was referring to, as to the two appraisals. So, definitely, as we get close, that final appraisal will be the more accurate one. Also, if property values change in the interim, when we did Shirley Hill, we had a preliminary, when we got to the closing, the final appraisal, the Welch property was worth a little bit more. So, the grant amount was larger, because the federal automatically adjusts, while the Shirley one was slightly reduced. And it was, I mean, it was small amounts, but the numbers will change in the end. They have to, according to the rules and regulations of the grant program. But we got the agreement with the family, though, was on a price tag. Obviously, it was supported by preliminary appraisal and stuff, but it was a price agreeing to both easement and land acquisition.
Nick, you had a question?
No.
Oh, I touched on it. Any other questions, or...
Lots of work.
Yeah, it is.
And it's a little complicated too, so I'm sorry if the explanations are a little...
No, it's pretty clear.
Between the easements and who owns what.
And the different types of grant, yeah. And what this one funds, what that one, yeah.
And a lot of hard work for the grant, so congratulations on securing all that funding.
Yeah, Ian and I have been having lots of fun writing grant applications. We're going to have a lot more fun before it's over.
Keep you busy.
Yeah.
You have any questions of us?
I don't think there's nothing we need to ask of you at this time. I guess one thing that might be worth asking at this point is, so when we go to use the town funds, they can either go towards the farmland easement, conservation easements on the farmland portion, or they could go towards helping with the purchase of the community forest part. The easement part, I know that's easy. We've done those before. We know how they work. We know about getting the executory interest to the town and all that. For the actual purchase of land, is there a preference that this board would have on which side those funds would go to? And I have to say this somewhat carefully, because it all, in the end, it comes down to what funding sources we have, what we can apply where.
The purchase of land would require town meeting, right? Where's the easement?
Well, not if it's conservation fund money. Public hearing by the board of selection.
Yeah, but it's not going, but it's not going, so it won't, it would not, if you gross appropriated, and let's just say that the community forest piece was more than what, was, let's say it was $1 million, and we were only spending $500,000, so there's other sources, you don't think that we would need a, some sort of, right, that we would?
Anything over $480,000, what they have in the conservation fund, has to go to town meeting for appropriation.
Even though the sources were external, they'd be offsetting?
No, I think there's, if I can clarify...
No, raised by taxation, it has to go to town.
Right, raised by taxation, yes.
If we were to introduce a warrant article, and say we're 200,000 short on this project, then obviously, that would be a warrant article, just like in England in the past. We're doing our best to avoid that. The funds that are already established, the votes that established them were that the funds could be raised, that they could be used for conservation easements or acquisition of land, and that they could be dispensed by the selectmen. So, that part's already been approved. It would require the public hearings like we've done in the past.
Right, the 4114.
So, David, are you saying that we could actually purchase some of that land? It would be in the town of Goffstown's name and the forest land?
No, the idea is the New England Forestry Foundation is purchasing it. The conservation fund could either be used to assist in that purchase, or the conservation fund could just be used for the conservation easements.
But I think when Attorney Drescher had reviewed the easement language, that's why the executory interest is in there. If you're going to use town funds, you have to have some interest. So, what interest would we have in the purchase, if we went purchase?
Well, you'd have the executory interest either way, I would assume, but...
Yeah, there's a couple, so, an easement is a conservation easement deed, which, you know, 10, 14 pages long or so. And there's, right, language in there that the town of Goffstown has executory interest if whoever the primary easement holder doesn't fulfill their responsibilities, the town can step in. So, that's the easement. In the land purchase, you have a warranty deed, you know, maybe a page, maybe three or four pages long, that sells the land from landowner Roberts to New England Forestry Foundation. That just describes the land as it sits, but that can have some language in there. For example, Attorney Drescher is a town council for Hollis as well. He's worked on another conservation project there, where it was purchase of land by nonprofit land trust. Town was putting money in. So, what the town ended up obtaining in that was the first right of refusal. So, if that land trust ever wanted to sell the property, the town would have the first right of refusal to purchase. And that was enough interest in the property that it satisfied town, selectman, Attorney Drescher's needs. It doesn't have to be that, but some language can be worked into the warranty deed as well. It could be something that says this land is permanently open for public recreation, or, you know, there's different ways to go about it, but you can insert language in either one or the other. But I think what David's question is trying to get at, what is, in contributing existing conservation funds, what is a more appealing use of those to help with the purchase of an easement that restricts certain things, development and other things in the property? On land that remains in private ownership, or contributing towards the purchase of land, which will be owned by a land trust, but open for public benefit. And there'll be certain things written in that guarantee access, use for these things.
For me, it would be the latter.
Purchase?
It would be the purchase, which, right, an interest, and knowing that the townspeople would have access to the forest and to trails, and that, to me, that would be my preference.
Yeah. One thing that that will actually be guaranteed, in fact, it's a requirement of the funding sources. The LCHIP requires it, the Moose Plate Grant requires it, so the state requires that those funds will have to go to the community forest part of the project, because those are requirements that it be available for public recreation. In that respect, that part's already covered. I don't, sorry, I didn't mean to confuse things even more. The main reason I threw that out there is because when I look at grants like that, that, you know, those come in, and because of their restrictions, they must be on that piece, right? The same with the byway one, it must be applied to that part, whereas the farm and ranchland protection program must be applied to protecting the soils. In the end, I don't know, when we get to the end and we have this list of grant funds, if it'll come out even, if you know what I mean. If we have like a deficit in one and a surplus in the other, the town fund might be the way to balance that. So, I just wanted to point that out.
But I think most members of the board feel the same way as Scott, that that's the preference. I assume nobody said differently, so...
I'd be happy with whatever helped the project, you know, whatever use was needed to fill the gaps.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Yeah, so one, we discussed appraisal, and I, you know, by all means, going forward, we'll get you the appraisal. Any other information, documentation that would be helpful going forward?
Yeah, I think it would be. I'm getting text messages here from people. Will the townspeople be able to use the land? I think you answered that, yes, so...
Somebody's watching, yay!
We have viewership.
Yeah, and just trying to get an idea down the road, obviously, part of that key funding, obviously, is going to be the scenic byway grant. But when you go down to the last 860, you list a lot of different ones, and of course, you have the warrant article in there. When you look at the other ones, I mean, do you have an idea if you're talking 500, 600, 400? I mean, do you...
Good question. So, there are a list of potential sources.
Yeah.
And like private fundraising, for example, well, you know, as much as we can get, but it's kind of hard to predict how well that'll go. New England Forestry Foundation and Forest Society also to do fundraising. So, it's really just a list of, these are the potentials. One in the list, though, the Open Space Institute, that one, we know we will apply for 200,000. So, we have some idea of the size of that one.
So, you're, I mean, and I would expect that you are expect to go forward with some type of a warrant article next year, then? I mean, it looks that way, kind of?
It's the Hail Mary pass. You know, there were many of the partners in this that wished that we had put one on the ballot for this year, but, you know, made the promise that we wouldn't do that, that it would be, you know, the last, the last thing we would look at. We want to try to get as much outside funding as possible. So, that's why it's in the list as potential, but...
So, you're still building and working towards it, and where to see?
The idea is to not go there, to do everything we can to not go there. And I'm feeling optimistic, because it's gone pretty good in the first six months of this.
And the list of these additional sources, the average amount they grant out, and what we could, assume we could get, would give us all the money we need. But the grants are competitive, so we won't get everyone we apply to. So, will we get enough to complete the whole thing, or not, is really a question that we don't know the answer to. But there's enough grants that would work for this property, that grant out enough historically to other projects that would provide us the total. But it comes down to, right, how successful we can be in obtaining grants.
Excellent. A lot of work, it's, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And if at any time you want another update, or whatever, just pass the word, I'd be happy to come back and answer whatever questions you have.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Ian.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll finish up with the town administrator's report.
I think I only had one other item, and that's the annual report, that time of year again, and we start working on the 2011 annual report. Your draft annual report is at tab 6E.
6E.
Let me know if you have any changes to that. I don't know if you had time to review it. I know you had a pretty thick packet over the weekend.
Actually, I didn't.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't review it.
We can wait till...
Didn't see that.
Okay. Yeah, I forgot the number in there.
So, is this going to be the leather bound edition?
Well, let me tell you about that.
I was...
We have not finished, we, well, we finished our analysis. Five bids came in on Friday, and the base bids ranged from $6,088 up to $10,200. That's just the base bid. Before we come forward with a recommendation to you, one, we have to check the references of the low bid, because it's a printer in New York that we're not familiar with.
In where?
New York. Deposit in New York.
Okay. I know where that is.
You're going to watch those people from New York.
That's on the way to Binghamton, New York.
Yeah.
Well, we're not familiar with them, so we called to get references. But what I need to know in our analysis, of the five bidders, two didn't, cannot provide hard covers, and three can. And the price for 500 hardcover books is anywhere from $3,000 to $4,000. And that would put me over budget in that line. So...
About 10.
Is it going to, is it going to be a consideration or not when we do our analysis?
Not at that price.
That's too much.
Yeah.
With or without all the 250th celebration pictures?
Oh, those will still be in there, but it won't be a hard cover.
I'm just kidding. How about 10?
10 hardcover books? Is that what you're saying?
Or we could even outsource, just give them, and they can, I would think. You can bring them someplace, they'll put a hardcover on it.
Rebind it.
Rebind it, exactly.
Yeah, the library does that all the time.
Just get a rebound.
We'll find out from the library. Why don't you look into some alternatives to that?
It's not like a permanently bound book, though, you know. When they, they rebind ours, they take like a decade and put it in.
So, 100 years from now, they'll look at that, and they'll say, boy, those folks back then cut back a little bit, right? Look at the binding on this book.
Yeah. Well, this is a book that's going to be used every single day, isn't it?
It is.
Seabirds.
rhetorical question.
The digital copy will be used.
Nick?
Just along those lines. I remember last year, around the end of, just before the deadlines for pictures came up, right after the election, we talked about taking pictures early, so that we made sure we had everybody. Where are we with scheduling?
Would you like to have your picture taken next week?
Well, I think it's earlier, you know, the early, because the last time I remember, we ran into issues with not having pictures on committees.
We didn't have pictures in there, and people didn't like that.
Well, any bought picture was already taken.
Budget committee is tomorrow night. Dan sent us a note.
Which? You're going to be advertising? Okay.
They had to take it a couple times, didn't they? It was an advertisement in one photo?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
So, the answer to the question is, next week, we take pictures?
Yes. Come dressed appropriately next week. You'll have your photo taken.
Okay.
Well, we already have a picture.
We already have a picture.
Yeah, costume.
Right? Oh, we're going to use that one?
Oh, you want to use the costume?
Let's use that one. Let's use that one.
Oh, I thought we put that in with the 250th.
No, maybe both.
Both what? Both?
No, the picture when we had the meeting.
Right. Well, we use that one. We have a picture of us, we're dressed in colonial garb. Let's use that one. That's fitting.
Can we take a group picture?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. And I have one strangling Phil.
We won't use that.
No, actually, it's a good one with Phil's, like, signing a document. You're all looking over, like you're doing the Declaration of...
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, so you want to use that, so I don't have to bring the camera down?
We're probably signing a proclamation to put somebody to the gallows.
I think that works great.
Memorandum of Understanding with Manchester.
Also, if you could give some thought to dedications and volunteer of the year, and send me your thoughts on those.
Okay. At the end of the town administrator's report?
I think so, yes.
You think so? Okay. The item that was in the consensus folder, we need to remember to discuss.
It's in non-public.
I know. I just don't want to let it fall through the cracks, like sometimes a few things do. Okay, so we're all set there. Okay, so then the next item is going to be... Back to the selectmen's discussion. We did everything else? Yep. New business. I have some new business. I was contacted by a resident who asked about using the Grassmere Town Hall for a class for state gas fitters license. And he contacted one of the members of the HTC, who told him that he didn't see a problem, but to give me a call. And I went through that with him and told him about insurance. And I didn't think that there was an issue, because we had the classes that were there for the PE license. Remember those? For the...
Professional Engineers Group Association, right?
Yeah, for the PE. And then, we found out that on the form for the facility use form, one of the bolded things, well, not bolded, but bulleted, was all users agree the use of the building is for not... is for nonprofit groups and no fee shall be, should be charged for any class or event held at the building. And that goes in for donations for the use of the building. So with that, I contacted Elizabeth, chairman of the HTC, and explained the situation to her. And she didn't have, she didn't see a reason why this would be an issue. He's looking to use the building for three hours a week, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It runs 35 weeks, the class. He has 12 people in the class. He's got 27 weeks left. And he is willing to donate $50 a week for the use of the, of the building, and he does have insurance.
Where is he now?
He isn't. He's in between. He was one place and that, they had to change that. So he's had, I think he, the numbers were...
It was a, a public facility in Manchester.
Yeah, it was a... Right, right, right. So he gives the class for the state gas fitters license on that. So he currently has 12 in there. He said if he needed it limited, he could limit it. This class that he has currently ends July 5th. That's, that would be his last class, Scott.
Just a, a couple of things. One, I don't, this, this would be a good way to try to generate revenue. And as long as we're not out casting aside anybody who is already scheduled as a nonprofit or a governmental meeting, if this is something that is just above and beyond that and we can generate revenue. And one, if he's going to provide his insurance certificate.
Yep.
And if we know what he's teaching in a sense, I'm, I'm assuming that he's not going to have anything that's like flammable or anything like that in the building when you say that. I mean, he's not going to be using like torches or anything like that, then I don't have a, I don't have any problem with it. I, I do think, though, it, it may underscore the need for us to create a policy with respect to our, our buildings because we talked about doing that and we just never, never have. And I think this is, I, I think we should proceed with this because I think it's a way for us, you know, quick math, you're talking almost $1,500.
I think $1,350.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's close.
Close enough.
Twice out of a week.
That helps, that helps pay a lot of the heating bills and electricity. So I, I'm, I think it's, it could be a win-win for us, but I think it just, it underscores the, the point for us to, just to simply get a facility use policy which makes it clean.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's really too far different than what we currently have for, let's say Parks and Rec because people do keep classes.
And we charge $15 an hour to use the commissioner's room and...
Okay, so we have that. But I think, and not being able to research this form, I mean, I know when this was first put together, we did a form quite a while ago when the building was first done and, and reopened for the organizations. Now, this may have been changed at one point after that. I don't know. I'm not saying that it did. I'm not saying that it didn't. But instead of wasting the time with that, this basically addresses the uses at the time that they were, basically, it was groups and organizations. And I don't think that there was ever any intent when this was put together to eliminate this type of a use because this type of a use, three hours a week, subject, it's flexible, it would go, you know, with the schedule if he had to. And it just seems to go with, with what the intent was.
Maybe I, I'm not 100% sure what this gentleman is and what people are going to the class, but when you compare it to Parks and Rec, I look at Parks and Rec, when they're using their facility, using it for people within the town, within the community, for the, for the greater part of that, is that fair?
Not always. If you're going for a dance class.
I know, I'm just saying, but usually that draws from people within the community. I'm not sure how many, you know, in other words, I look at this as somewhat of a business entity type piece and I'm not sure if they're, you know, I would expect it coming in from all sorts of different areas. I'm just saying, I think there's a difference.
Well, I don't think we're getting people from Keene is probably in the area that are looking to get their gas fitters. Like, we're talking 12 people.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm just saying, I think, all I'm saying, I'm not saying you should, shouldn't, I'm just saying, but I wouldn't relate it in comparison to Parks and Rec and what we do there.
But it's similar in the sense that this gentleman could have said, I wanted to use the Parks and Rec building to have his class. Oh, yeah. And he would have been allowed to do that. Yeah.
All right, I guess that, I'm just going more to process. Who, where do I go if I want to request to use Grassmere Town Hall?
Call Town Hall.
So I go to you?
Catherine has a schedule.
Right. Okay.
I have to check for availability. I have to tell them there's a form and a process, that they have to be able to provide insurance, what the capacity of the rooms is.
Everything on that form, yes.
So you would have the ability to offer multiple locations. So if someone came and just said, I'm looking for a space for this size.
I just deal with Grassmere.
She just deals with Grassmere.
Right, right.
And these rooms down here.
And you're only talking, I take it at this point in time, you're only talking in the lower floor or you're, or you're talking...
Well, no, no, he's only talking to the meeting.
He's the only guy I've stood with.
The meeting room where they had the blackboard.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, but I didn't, I didn't know if you were actually looking...
First floor to the right.
I, I understand how the building's laid out. I'm just saying, are we also talking second floor or is that done?
It's not done yet.
That's in the future.
That's in the future. That's in the future.
My, I, I think we should proceed with this, but I also think that we really should have a, a facility use form similar to what the school has townwide. And that, on that form, obviously, it's the no brainer ones like, you know, do you have a certificate of insurance? But, you know, you, you know, the school has a, a pretty good one. I don't think we really have to go and reinvent the wheel. Take the schools, if it's going to require any type of cleanup afterwards, who's responsible for that? Are you going to require a deposit, you know, a damage type of deposit for something? So it's not, it's not all that, it's already there. I had to fill out like 10 of them this year for the, for the 250th stuff. I had to do a ton of them, but, and it's quick. And then if there is any need for have anybody sign off on it, whether it be Sue or police or fire or somebody, then they do a quick sign off and we're done. But I'm, I'm okay with it. And I just think that we should just get it to where it needs to be. That should be, we should do that.
Well, just to follow up, there are some things that are on here.
On there already.
That address it, okay? All users agree not to exceed the meeting room capacity of 49 people. All users are responsible for cleaning the meeting room after each use, including sweeping the floor and taking the garbage recycling outside of your appropriate bins. They go through this, they sign it, there's a, a place where you sign this, and if there is an issue with this, it comes up and it's addressed.
Right, I guess where I'm, where I'm going with this is that, let's just say that he wants this thing on Tuesdays from 6:00 to 9:00, and we get another phone call and somebody else wants another room, and we have the ability to rent out that room or this. I'm just saying, there's, there's the potential here that we have the ability to, you know, rent these rooms out, not just one, but when, when that top part is finished, that can hold, same thing, right?
Well, yeah, and that was a whole nother issue. We had started looking at that because I had gone down and I had met with, I had gone down with Helen Skogland, met with the woman who runs, the executive director of the one down in Derry. We went through their charter, how they operate, they had a board of directors and, you know, that whole issue. So we had done it, but we, we hadn't got to that point. And my understanding is that Elizabeth is also, either she's been there or she's going there, she might have an appointment with there and a couple of other different places to see how the structure works. So that's one of the things that the commission would wind up doing and coming back and having that discussion with the board of selectmen at some point in time. But we're not there yet.
Well, for this one, I, I mean, I'm, I can make...
Just a quick question. Now, the money that they give is going into...
Grassmere Town Hall Restoration Fund.
Okay, so when you mentioned something about revenue, it's not going to offset the costs? Not that there would be major costs, but it's not directly going to offset costs of using the room.
But I think, I think Scott's point was that, that, that the potential was there.
Yeah, and it's, or it's going back into the building at least because, you know, that money can be used for emergency stairway access, elevator, et cetera, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the, the motion that we authorize the town or the chair to enter into an agreement with this gentleman to conduct classes, provided that he complies...
Well, could I make a suggestion? Rather than authorize a meeting to enter an agreement with it?
Don't need to.
Just authorize the town administrator to...
Waive that one.
To, to, yeah, to waive this and authorize the town administrator to work out the details with him.
Waive just that bullet, right?
Right.
Waive the bullet in terms of all, of it being exclusive to nonprofit groups, right?
Right, that, right.
All right.
Allow availability of Grassmere?
So I'll re, I'll redo it. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to engage the gentleman...
To waive that bullet.
By waiving the bullet that states, "All users agree the use of the building is for nonprofit groups and no fee should be charged for any class or event held at the building." Going forward.
Going forward, right.
Not just for this one particular.
Okay, however you want to do it. If you want to do it on a case-by-case basis or, or, okay.
I don't want to be in the business of trying to say who can and who can't.
No, I don't blame you.
We allow public use. We allow public use.
Okay.
So that, the motion then is to eliminate that bulleted item that you just read from the policy? That's what I'm hearing Nick say.
That's what it would be, basically.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
I don't know if I got a second, but...
So is that your motion?
That was the motion.
To eliminate that bullet? And I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. I think it, I think it'll work out fine, and if there's any issue, I'm sure that, that town administrator...
I'd like to also make another motion to authorize the town administrator to develop a facility use policy for all, all town buildings. How much time do you need for that? Six months?
I have the school one, but we have more unique, different...
I'm just trying to, I just want to get it done.
Facilities?
We'd be talking about it forever. If you think you need six months, we'll give you six months. Three months, we'll give you three months. I mean, whatever you think you can...
Start on it with a report in three months. Progress report.
My world is, gets done.
But you're going to forget in six months.
But you know, the problem is, I under, I understand that you want to get something done, but sometimes because you got something done, you miss something or...
But you've got to have a deadline. That's all I'm saying. And we, if we've been talking about this for a year or two, I mean, we have the template out there. I, I think, I think two or three months is a fair timeline here. And if, and if you need more time, come back to us, but...
I think the last place I left off is LGC was giving guidance in terms of what a facility use policy should also have.
Well, that's one place to start since they do, they are insurance carrier.
And I understand that, but they are also the insurance carrier for the school district who has their, a policy and they have sample school district policies. So I think, and, and trust me, it's all numbered and, you know, JB, whatever it is.
I've got the school one. That's what I brought to you folks once before, and I think you said it was an overkill.
Right.
And it was like this thick, the policy.
It is very thick.
But you know what? If that's what it is, then that's what, if that's easy, if that's the easiest thing for you, I might have that and have nothing.
Redundancy in that, and so we, I'd like to get through that, and I think it's missing a few things that I would like to see because of the uniqueness of our different locations. It's not like...
So your motion, Scott, is?
To get it done.
Make, make a motion.
Let's see, it's January, February, March, by April 16th.
What?
Have a draft of a facility use policy.
Taxi?
Any discussion, all in favor?
What?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
April 16th.
Thank you.
All abstaining?
I agree with the motion.
I guess it's unanimous then.
It's unanimous. I was waiting for you to say that.
Is this a unanimous vote?
Are we moving on to still on new business?
Are we still on milfoil?
Yeah.
Not, not 250th, my friend. I...
Is there any other new business?
Yeah.
What?
And I'm not sure where to go with it, but a gentleman came up to me the other day, and he lives in proximity to St. Age Drive, close to the national grid lines. But yet, they're not on, national grid being, being our natural gas, in other words, for heating. And his question was, when they go in and they do reclamation for roads, et cetera, and I realize that would be something where I imagine that, that street would have to, I don't know how you would go about it, but if they wanted to have that line, how would that work? In other words, what he's getting at is that...
Oh, he wants to feed into it once it's re, it's tore up?
Well, yeah, well, part of it would be, there's a, it'd be like water line going by. I mean, there's going to be a cost to this.
Is there a current, is there a line there now?
No. And the question would be, let's say, in this case, they're about 1,000 feet away, you know, so let's say if they're coming up the road, you know, that, if there were a reclamation on the road, if there ever was a time to do it, that would be, but, you know, I don't know how they would coordinate or anything, but he just brought that up. I don't know if that's something the town, that goes to DPW or how does that work out? If some, in other words, if a community or an air, or a street said, hey, by the way, we'll be able to hook on to national grid, and we understand there'll be a cost to us, but they'd rather do it during the reclamation of a road than having, having, having a street picked up. That's just a thought.
Not knowing, I would imagine a homeowner would pay for the, the line. And if they couldn't coordinate it with when the road, then that would have to go through public works. Their, their costs would probably be less if national grid coordinated when the road was open.
You also have that, his road might be being reclaimed, but where they have to pick up might be parts of roads that aren't reclaimed.
Correct.
So then that road, I mean, if it's only him that wants it...
I think his best bet is to contact DPW to put, let, let them know that in the event that you ever reclaim and national grid is extending the natural gas line, I am interested in...
I under, I understand it, but I don't know if that's just something that comes up automatically or is that something that has to be pursued by residents in that area? I mean, honestly, one person making the request doesn't really, you know...
I don't think national, they'd have to check if national grid has plans to extend their lines.
Just a, right. Because I believe he had contacted national grid and they kind of said, well, why don't said, "Well, why don't you check with your local, you know, municipality is what he was, what I was receiving," but anyway, okay.
Give it to the car.
Okay.
The Economic Development Committee ought to get in on this.
Any other new business, old business? Committee reports, Planning Board, Planning Board did meet last week.
An interesting meeting.
What's that?
It was an interesting meeting.
Oh, did you watch it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Would you like to report on it?
No?
No, you were there in person.
Okay.
Had a presentation, a preliminary presentation on the apartments that were behind, off Moose Club Park, you know, that I had brought up, and apparently, this is the fifth part of a five, the final or fifth part of a five-part project, part one and part two were done, part three and part four apparently haven't been done, and Brian needs to research to see what the requirements were as far as going from one, two, and then to five, without doing three and four. The difficulty for him was because they had come in, and then there was that subdivision in the middle, and that's the year that I wasn't on the board, so whether or not that had anything to do, and there were concerns because they were asking for a waiver of the, the proportion of the commercial aspect of the project also, so the board did have concern about that, and those will have to be addressed by the next time they come in, if they don't come in, I mean, there might be an issue where they can't go to five, but I don't know the answer to that. And then there was the public hearing for the, for the petition zoning articles, the zoning article for the, requested by the county to rezone the, both sides of Mass Road to the Flex District, that was approved, to go on the ballot as recommended. The property that was requested, the Comatid Historic District, did not pass to go on as recommended, it actually passed to go on as not recommended.
Was there rationale there?
I don't know, I can't answer your question on that. I, I can't answer, I, I really don't know, I was, I was a little surprised myself. The first vote to approve was a three-three-one vote, so it didn't pass, and then the vote to not recommend was a four-two-one vote.
Yeah.
Is, is this related to a similar article that was last March?
Yeah, four-two-one vote on that one, correct. And then the one for rezoning the.
I should bring it next week if I have it.
Parcel in Pernardville, that's currently a chiropractor, to commercial, that one did get recommended, and the one for the large area of the, the multi, the multiple lots, that one did not get recommended, there were many of the residents that lived there that were opposed to it, I would say it was probably close to three-quarters of the, of the public that came was opposed to that.
We'll go back to the second one if I can, this is the one that we're in a lawsuit with the party.
Correct.
And this was supposedly a fix, or a proposed solution to address the lawsuit.
And you have to understand that they had come in a few months back with a proposal, and there were some suggestions made to them, and they came back and they incorporated those suggestions that were made by the Planning Board.
Into the petition.
Right, into the change, correct.
I guess where I'm, would it, should this board, because this is the board that has to defend lawsuits, should this board consider having our representative, and since this is a lawsuit, this is non-public, because it's not, it's not, it's not the threat of litigation, it is in litigation, should this board, I believe, consider authorizing our representative to have a discussion in non-public with respect to this particular petition article, because it has very much to do with our ability to defend a lawsuit and our discussions with council regarding whether or not we would receive a favorable decision at, at the courts. And I think if, I think if we're trying to be fiscally prudent, knowing what we know, I think it would be very appropriate to have our representative in non-public discuss this with the Planning Board to determine whether or not they want to change their opinion or their recommendation, because I think we're exposing our town to undue liability if we don't do that, and if the Planning Board wants to maintain their position, I'm, I, we have to respect that, because that's their prerogative, but I'd rather have them make that decision after they hear what is the status of our, of our lawsuit, and if they have to hear it from our town council's mouth directly, then so be that. I just don't want to put good money after bad here.
No, I have to be very careful of what I say publicly regarding this, because we're involved in a lawsuit, okay? The petitioner came in, made a presentation, Brian made a presentation, and he said that Brian accurately, again, I'm trying to be as close to what they say, and I'm not representing that, I'm quoting what they're saying, but he indicated that Brian made a, a very good introduction, he added several things to that, the chairman asked me if that was accurate, and I said that, the question came up, had this gone to the HDC, I said the HDC is very aware of it, the question then came up was what he, the petitioner said, was it accurate? And I said that some of the things that he said, there might be a disagreement with some of the things that were portrayed, but in basically, everything that he said was appropriate, without getting into detail at that point in time on a discussion, since this is a public hearing on the zoning petition. Brian did bring those issues up, and, you know, I did not elaborate more than that when I was at the public hearing, but just, it was noted why it was here, and this is the second time, as I said, that the Planning Board's seen this, because the first time they came in, it was discussed, and how do you want us to come back, and they came back to.
But is the Planning Board privy to our town council's legal opinion as to this case, and as to what the potential outcome, his opinion is to the outcome?
I don't know if every single member is, I was, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know of any.
Well, and I guess, I think, knowing what the exposure is, if we were to lose this lawsuit, I think it behooves us to at least either release the opinion from our attorney and/or for our attorney to be present at the Planning Board in a non-public session to discuss the merits of this case and the reasons why this petition article was put forward. I think, and I, I strongly think this, this is what we should do, the exposure is far too great, if we receive an adverse outcome from litigation, and I'd, I'd rather have the Planning Board know all the facts and make a decision, right, wrong, or indifferent, than, than, than be accused later, that two or three of them voted one way, because they did not know what our town council's opinion on this case was, and what the potential remedies were for the, for the town to, like, limit its financial exposure.
These are not, these are not minutes, this is just, I mean, Brian, Brian, Brian did indicate about that.
But I understand that as Brian, but there's a difference when you have your town attorney sitting in the room, going over the case with you, and explaining what are the pros and cons of your case, and what the recommendation is to try to resolve it in a manner that is best for the, for the town, because if we were to get an adverse ruling on this, who's holding the bag? The townspeople hold the bag on it, so.
Well, let me ask this, when, I, I don't know how much time there is for the Planning Board to reconsider their decision, I don't know what's the drop dead date for that.
Oh, when the ballots are printed, probably.
The warrant has to be posted in its entirety by the last Monday in January, which is January thirtieth, so I have to post it, and they have to submit it to, to me and to the town clerk by Jan, by January thirtieth, so it can be posted.
Well.
In the next meeting.
I mean, that might be, but then we're also under the, under the, the difficulty of, are all the members going to be there when the town attorney is there?
You know what, I'm just, I'm, you know, I remember this, this case specifically, and I, I, we are the ones who have to decide whether or not we're going to settle a case, whether or not we're going to proceed, and unfortunately, it's not the Planning Board that has to do that, it's, it's this board, and we, I just think we're, we're not doing the right thing by not giving the Planning Board the opportunity to speak with town council, and to potentially hear that, that, the pros and cons of our, of this particular case.
Mr. Chair.
David?
I, I agree with the direction Scott's going in, I got a question for Sue, is this board, if this goes forward as it is right now, and the zoning says they not recommend, does this board have the opportunity to put a, a recommendation on the warrant?
Yeah.
Not on planning.
Not on, not on zoning.
And, and I'm telling you, nine times out of ten, if not more than that, whatever the Planning Board puts down as a recommendation, generally is what, how the voters proceed on these things, and I'm just, I am pretty nervous as to what the potential outcome will be if this, if this is acted upon as it is now, not to recommend, I'm, I'm very concerned.
I'm, I'm in favor of Scott's direction on this.
Yeah, comment? Well, you want town administrator to work with Brian and sing about taking care of that for the next meeting?
You know, I don't know when the next meeting is, this could be, maybe it's a special meeting that they have to hold, but I mean, and it also requires Drescher to be there to, to discuss with them this case and what his opinion is on it, that's what we were afforded, so we were afforded, you know, we get that ability to hear council's opinion as to what are the merits of the case, and then we have to make decisions based upon that, therefore, when it comes to something like this, I think that they should be afforded that same courtesy and the ability to hear it from Drescher's mouth, and then they can vote anywhere they want, and let the chips fall where they may, but I, I don't want to be on the hook here that they didn't get the right information, and then all of a sudden something went south, and they're going to come, look, pointing back at the Board of Selectment, so.
So what should we do, then, have her, try to touch, work with Brian and.
And the chair of the Planning Board, I mean, that's, that's their prerogative.
It's a process.
You don't have time for, for, they're going to have to have a special meeting for this, because they don't have time.
Well.
When's their next meeting?
No, I think they have.
Do we have time?
Yes, they have a meeting on the twenty, oh, done, whoops, twenty-six.
That's really cutting it close.
And Drescher has to be there, and he can't, and it doesn't leave you time for, if it, if it falls, an alternative date, do you?
Right, I, I think that, you know, through Brian and the Planning Board chair, should strongly think about scheduling a special meeting with Drescher to discuss that, this issue.
If Attorney Drescher is available on the twenty-sixth, what's the issue?
If there's a weather-related event.
Yeah, whatever, if it snows, yeah, I'm just saying, Nick, it's very possible.
You're, you're cutting time short, if something, if an unexpected event comes up, it could be trouble.
Take advantage of ten days.
Yeah. You know, here's another thing, for all intents and purposes, if we're trying to schedule Drescher for next week.
In fact, we were hoping for Drescher for.
I'm just saying.
No, I mean, we, we were personally hoping for a different dates on some things, and again.
Twenty-six is a planning board meeting?
And that gives you, so if it does snow that day, then you're, you got a backup for the twenty-seventh, or the Monday, or what's the backup plan?
Would you say the thirtieth was the deadline?
I've got to post it, and I usually post on Friday in case, that's my snow date, you know?
I think, I think you're, I mean, it's the winter.
Want to see if they can do it this Thursday, call a special meeting, or for the purposes of meeting with the town attorney?
I, I really do, I, I think it's, it's that important.
Well, anything I can say is.
I mean, Phil, you know this case, probably better than all of us, I mean, this thing has exposure.
Scott, I understand, it's been in, in before, it was looked at, it was discussed, what they wanted, what they would like to see, petitioner came in with the changes that, that the Planning Board suggested.
Well, we cannot force another board to compel them to do anything they don't want to do, but I think we could strongly suggest that, that we highly recommend to them that they meet with town council to potentially reconsider it after hearing council's opinion.
I think that's all we can do.
It's all we can do.
Okay, all right, do the best we can.